We'll call the January 4th City Council meeting to order. Commissioner Smith, if you would give us the invocation and then we'll have the presentation of colors by the Apopka Color Guard and then the pledge.
Let's assume the attitude of prayer. Our fathers once more again that you have allowed us to see a brand new day, a brand new year, and we come to say thank you. Thank you, my father, for all the blessings that were stored upon us and giving us this opportunity to be servants to this community. We ask that all that we shall say and do be pleasing and accepted in your sight. In thy son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On January 3rd, 1938, President Franklin Roosevelt founded the National Foundation for Infantile Paralysis to combat polio. It was later renamed the March of Dimes Foundation, a term coined by Eddie Corner, singer and one of the foundation's fundraisers, where he asked Americans to send their dimes as a way to raise money. After funding Salk's vaccine, which essentially eradicated polio, the organization turned its focus to prevention of birth defects and infant mortality. Today, the March of Dimes work to improve health of mothers and babies across America. Back of the day.
Okay, next up, we've got Joe Patton's gonna, we've got thirty-one members of the city of Apopka staff that are being recognized today for their contributions to the city based on their tenure here, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty years, I think in a twenty, maybe is there twenty-five?
Twenty, I believe it was.
Okay, twenty is all, so Joe, if you'll take it away and introduce our...
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Appreciate you having us here today. So every quarter, we recognize our employees, as the mayor said, for their years of dedicated service. So individuals will, I'll call out their name, read a little bio of them, and then they'll proceed up here, grab their, be presented their certificate and their PIN, and then they'll remain up here for, after the, I finish with everyone, and then we'll take a picture together. All right? All right, so the first is Jean Sanchez. I know she loves being first, because, you know. So she is in community development. She has, today she celebrates five years in the planning division. Jean was born in the Philippines and raised in south downtown Orlando. She's a graduate of the University of Central Florida and holds a bachelor's degree in political science and a master's degree in public administration. Jean began working for the city on October 2nd, 2017, as a planner one in the community development department, and on April 16th, 2018, she was promoted to planner two. On May 23rd, 2022, she was promoted to the department's senior planner position. She continues to serve in this position today. Jean has been married to her husband, who is here today, for over seven years, and they have a son Joaquin and a daughter Paloma. She is in, also in the community development department. She celebrates ten years today. Jennifer was born and raised in Hialeah, Florida, and moved to central Florida following Hurricane Andrew in 1993. She's a graduate of Apopka High School. Go Big Blue, she says. Salisbury, Missouri, okay. Jennifer's journey with the city began as a summer camp counselor for recreation in 2009. On November 29th, 2012, she began working as a part-time recreation facility attendant and was hired full-time as a recreation leader on December 31st, 2012. She then transferred to the community development department as a permit clerk and on September 29th, 2014. She went on to earn her certification as an ICC permit technician and was promoted to permit technician on March 8th, 2017. She continues to serve in this position today. It should be noted that one of Jennifer's most fond memories of her tenure with the city was getting married to her husband, A.J. Cardoza, at Apopka City Hall on April 8th, 2016. Family means everything to Jennifer. She was blessed with a wonderful family, is the proud mother of three boys, Derek, Devon, and David. When not at the office, she spends most of her free time at theme parks. She is a huge Disney fan.
I was at your wedding. Thank you.
Next is Cody Bennett, Fire Department. He celebrates five years as an emergency medical service. Cody began his career with the city on October 10th, 2017, as a volunteer firefighter. On November 6th, 2017, he was hired as a firefighter first class in suppression. On April 25th, 2019, he transferred to the EMS division as a paramedic. Then on July 31st, 2022, he was promoted to fire engineer. He continues to serve our community in this position today. Tyler Bennett, Fire Department, celebrating five years. Tyler was born and raised right here in Apopka. He attended school at Trinity Apopka Middle, Apopka High, and went on to obtaining a Bachelor of Science at the University of Central Florida. Tyler began working with the city on February 15th, 2017, as a volunteer firefighter. On November 6th, 2017, he was hired as a firefighter first class in suppression. On January 18th, 2018, he transferred to the EMS division as a paramedic. Tyler was promoted to fire engineer on May 1st, 2022, and continues to serve in our community in this position today. He sincerely enjoys working with all of his colleagues within the fire department. When not at the station, Tyler loves spending time with his wife and three children. Next is Philip Phil Farrell, Fire Department, five years. Phil was born in Warminster, Pennsylvania, and moved to central Florida in 2012. He attended Armwood Senior High in Tampa and went on to receive his AS degree in emergency medical services. Prior to joining the fire service in 2017, Phil worked for GM, the largest auto parts distributor in the southeast United States. Phil began working with the city on October 10th, 2017, as a volunteer firefighter. On November 6th, 2017, he was hired as a firefighter first class in suppression. Then on March 12th, 2020, he was transferred to the EMS division as a paramedic and continues to serve in this capacity today. As a firefighter paramedic, Phil loves being able to visit our local schools and tell the students all about what he does while he is at work. Phil is living his most perfect life. He has a beautiful wife, four children, and a recent grandson. To round out the family, the Farrell's have two dogs named Spaghetti and Meatball, and a cat named Ziti. Next is Leonard Lenny Gabello, Fire Department. He's celebrating five years today. Lenny was born in Miami and raised in Deltona. He holds an AS degree in computer science, his FIRE EMT certification from Central Florida Fire Academy, and paramedic certification from Orlando Medical Institute. Lenny began working with the city on October 10th, 2017, as a volunteer firefighter. On November 6th, 2017, he was hired as a firefighter first class in suppression. Then on March 14th, 2019, he transferred to the EMS division as a paramedic. He continues to serve in this position today. Outside the station, Lenny loves spending time with his family. He has three little boys who keep him very busy. He manages and coaches two baseball teams and a football team on his days off. Next is Robert Robbie Hippler Jr., Fire Department, celebrating five years. Robbie was raised in central Florida and attended UCF for two years before becoming a firefighter. He began his career with the city on October 10th, 2017, as a volunteer firefighter. On November 6th, 2017, he was hired as a firefighter first class in suppression. He completed paramedic training in 2018 and transferred to the EMS division on March 14th, 2019, as a paramedic and continues to serve in this position today. When asked about his fondest work moment, Robbie noted the rain or shine fire in mid-2022. His experience will forever be remembered and revered. When not at the station, Robbie is a licensed skydiver and also enjoys snowboarding out west, staying physically active, and spending quality time with friends and family. Robbie is also the son of the IT director, so he never loses Wi-Fi service. Just saying. So next is Alexander Klepper, Fire Department, celebrating five years. Lieutenant Klepper began working with the city on October 9th, 2017, as a volunteer firefighter. On November 6th, 2017, he was hired as a firefighter first class in suppression. He transferred to EMS division on January 18th, 2018, as a paramedic. On February 14th, 2021, he was promoted to fire engineer. He then earned the rank of lieutenant on May 1st, 2022, and continues to serve in this Next, John McGuire, Fire Department, celebrating ten years. Lieutenant McGuire began working with the city as a volunteer firefighter on February 16th, 2011. On October 21st, 2012, he was hired as a firefighter first class in suppression. On December 3rd, 2017, he was promoted to fire engineer, and on January 18th, 2017, he was transferred to the EMS division as a paramedic. He was promoted to the rank of lieutenant on October 1st, 2021, and continues to serve in our community in this position today. Sean Potter, Fire Department, celebrating ten years. Sean began working with the city as a volunteer firefighter on October 21st, 2010. On November 12th, 2012, he was hired as a firefighter first class in suppression. On January 19th, 2017, he earned his paramedic certification and was transferred to the EMS division. On November 28th, 2021, he was promoted to fire engineer. He continues to serve in this position today. Brian Martin, Fire Department, celebrating fifteen years. Lieutenant Martin was born in South Weymouth, Massachusetts, and moved to central Florida in 2001. He has an associate's degree in emergency services and holds various certifications pertaining to firefighting and management. Lieutenant Martin began working with the city as a volunteer firefighter on November 27th, 2007. He was hired full-time on December 13th, 2007, as a firefighter first class in suppression. On October 14th, 2008, he transferred to the EMS division as a paramedic. On December 3rd, 2017, he was promoted to fire engineer, and on April 15th, 2019, he was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, which is his current position. He appreciates all of the great individuals that work with the city's fire department. He has shared so many memories and laughs throughout his years of service, he wouldn't trade it for anything. When not at the station, Lieutenant Martin enjoys spending time with his lovely wife Karina and their three children ages eight, seven, and six months. Next is Wilfredo Rivera Sanchez, celebrating fifteen years. Division Chief Sanchez began working with the city as a volunteer firefighter on November 13th, 2007. On December 13th, 2007, he was hired as a firefighter first class in suppression. On October 6th, 2009, he transferred to the EMS division as a paramedic. He was promoted to the rank of lieutenant as the public education officer on May 16th, 2015, and on November 16th of that same year, he was promoted to fire captain. On February 17th, 2020, he was promoted to division chief for EMS, which is his current Christopher Rumsa, Fire Department, celebrating fifteen years. Chris began working with the city as a volunteer firefighter on November 30th, 2007. On December 25th, 2007, he was hired full-time as a firefighter first class in suppression. On December 3rd, 2017, he was promoted to fire engineer and continues to serve that Christopher Crowley, Fire Department, serving twenty years. Lieutenant Crowley started his career with the city as a firefighter first class on October 21st, 2002, in suppression, and was promoted to firefighter engineer on October 12th, 2007. Then on November 17th, 2014, he earned his paramedic certification and was transferred to the EMS division. On December 3rd, 2017, he was promoted to the rank of fire lieutenant and continues to serve in this position today. John Dreschel, Fire Department, serving twenty years. John began working with the city as a volunteer firefighter on December 22nd, 1986. He was hired full-time on October 6th, 2002, as a firefighter first class of suppression. He completed the paramedic program and transferred to the EMS division on February 15th, 2005. Then on December 3rd, 2017, he was promoted to fire engineer. John continues to serve in this position today. Matthew Matt Gergone, Fire Department, celebrating twenty years. District Chief Gergone was born and raised in Jacksonville and moved to central Florida in 2000, earned an AS degree in EMS from UCF Valencia and an AS degree in fire science from St. Petersburg College. Awarded firefighter of the year in 2020, Matt's dedicated career with the city began on October 21st, 2002, as a firefighter first class for suppression. He completed the paramedic program and transferred to the EMS on November 20th, 2004. Notably, in 2005, he joined the SWAT team as a medic. On December 11th, 2009, he was promoted to the rank of firefighter lieutenant. Most recently, he was promoted to fire district chief on July 31st, 2022, and he continues today in that position. When not at the station, Matt enjoys spending time with his wife of twelve years and their two boys ages ten and seven, along with their golden retriever. He is currently preparing for a triathlon. Daniel McGatlin, Fire Department, celebrating twenty years. Daniel began his career with the city on October 21st, 2002, as a firefighter first class for suppression. He continues to serve in our community today. Michael Suver, Information Technology, celebrating ten years. Michael was born and raised in Mount Dora, Florida. He attended the University of South Florida, where he earned his bachelor's and master's degree in geography. Michael began his career with the city on December 3rd, 2012, as a GIS analyst in public services. On October 2nd, 2022, he transferred to information technology and was promoted as the city's GIS coordinator, which is his current position. Notably, Michael began a city drone program for surveying. He went on to state that, he went on to state that he enjoys learning new things from his coworkers almost daily. He also appreciates that his colleagues are chill and can find humor in even stressful situations. He feels like he is part of the family. When not at work, Michael enjoys spending time with his parents. His mother is a retired teacher and flautist. His father is a Vietnam veteran and retired engineering draftsman. He also enjoys participating with his running club, taekwondo, painting, kayaking, ballroom dancing, and volunteering within his community. He currently assists with the Humane Society of Lake County, the Special Olympics, and Next is Robert Bob Shelton, Information Technology, celebrating fifteen years today. Bob was born in rural East Tennessee and moved to central Florida during high school. He began working for the city on October 8th, 2007, as a computer support specialist for information technology. On October 1st, 2017, he was promoted to information technology supervisor, where he continues to serve in that position today. Throughout his career, Bob oversaw the migration of the city's platform from Novell to Microsoft. He takes pride in working with IT and feels every achievement in their department is a team effort. A lifelong musician, when not at the office, Bob enjoys spending time with his wife, daughter, and son, as well as a family cat and dog. Carl started working for the city of Apopka on December 2nd, 2012. He began as a construction foreman for utility construction in the Public Services Department. On November 16th, 2005, he transferred to the Street Maintenance Division as a construction foreman. Then on May 6th, 2006, he transferred to the Utility Restoration. On October 1st, 2007, he was transferred to Information Technology as a GIS technician, where he serves today. Nathan Peoples, Police Department, celebrating five years. Nathan began working for the city on November 27th, 2017, as a communication technician. He continues to serve in this position today. Notably, Nathan is a communications training officer for the division. Nicholas DeRazio, Police Department, ten years. Officer DeRazio was born in New Jersey and moved to Apopka in 1984. He graduated from UCF with a degree in business administration, management, and is currently pursuing a master's at UCF in police leadership. Officer DeRazio began working for the city on November 5th, 2012, as a police officer. Notably, he joined the central Florida Metro SWAT team in 2014. On September 11th, 2016, Officer DeRazio was assigned to the K-9 unit, where he was partnered with K-9 Valor for 5.5 years. Together, they facilitated patrol K-9 requests ranging from missing people to K-9 calls for service to public demonstrations and more. K-9 Valor retired in December of 2021 and resides with the DeRazio family. In 2021, Officer DeRazio was partnered with K-9 Rule, a Belgian Melonoy. Officer DeRazio is a certified K-9 instructor for the city. When not at the station, Officer DeRazio enjoys spending time with his beautiful wife Toshia and children, daughter Emily, who is engaged to soccer and theater, sorry, engaged in soccer and theater. I didn't mean to get her engaged already. So, and children, daughter and son Alec, a soccer and golf enthusiast. There, I did that better. The DeRazios are also expecting a new bundle of joy, a son due to arrive this January. Robert Campbell, Police Department, fifteen years. A native Floridian, Officer Campbell was born and raised in the Tampa Plant City area and moved to central Florida in September of 2007. He attended Seminole State College, where he received his associate in arts degree. Officer Campbell began working for the city on October 1st, 2007, as a police officer. He continues to serve in this position today. Notably, he received Florida's Drug Recognition Expert of the Year Award for 2020 and Apopka Police Department's Officer of the Year Award in 2021. He also served as a field training officer for seven years. When not at work, Officer Campbell loves to travel. He has visited 26 states and DC, as well as 10 countries. His favorite place visited was Wells, England. He also has a dash home named Diesel. He also has a dash home named Diesel. Harold Cummings, Police Department, celebrating 15 years. Sorry, I was too fast there. Harold Cummings, Police Department, celebrating 15 years. Officer Cummings was born and raised in Buffalo, New York and moved to Central Florida in 1996. He attended Oleen High School in New York and Cataragus County Sheriff's Academy in New York in 2004. Officer Cummings started working for the city on October 1st, 2007 as a police officer for field services and continues to serve in this position today. Notably, he is coming upon his ninth year as a field training officer. Officer Cummings and his wife have four children. When not at the station, he enjoys spending time with his family and taking guitar lessons. Next is Cynthia Hall, Police Department, celebrating 15 years. Lieutenant Hall began working for the city on December 10th, 2007 as a police officer in field services. Throughout her tenure, she has performed a variety of duties for both the Field and Support Services Divisions. On September 11th, 2016, she was promoted to the rank of police sergeant in field services. Then on June 9th, 2019, she was promoted to the rank of police lieutenant. Lieutenant Hall continues to serve in our community in this position today. Arvin Chadresting, Public Service Department, celebrating 5 years. Arvin was born in Elizabeth, New Jersey and raised in Queens, New York. He moved to Orlando in 2006 and to Apopka in 2008. Arvin attended Olympia High School. He went on to receive an Associate of Science in Civil Surveying Engineering at Valencia College and his Bachelor of Science in Construction Engineering and Project Management from Seminole State College. Arvin began his tenure with the city as a part-time water conservation aide and was hired full-time in December 18th, 2017. On June 21st, 2018, he was promoted to the Water Conservation Specialist, which is his current position. When performing water quality sampling on lakes, Arvin enjoys seeing the different wildlife and has had close encounters with coyotes, alligators, turtles, tortoises, and snakes. Outside of work, Arvin loves making furniture, even decor and interior design structures. He also enjoys rebuilding motors and custom automotive bodywork. Next is Sean Flanagan, Public Service Department, celebrating 5 years. Sean was born and raised in Tarpon Springs, Florida, and he moved to Central Florida in 2017. He started working with the city on October 30th, 2017 as an electrician 2 in the Utility Plant Maintenance Division where he is currently serving. Dean Leatherboro, Public Services Department, 5 years. Dean began working with the city on December 4th, 2017 as a utility service worker 2 in the Utility Maintenance Division, where he serves today. Timothy Rippon, Public Service Department, celebrating 15 years. Tim began working for the city on November 27th, 2007 as a maintenance worker 1 for street maintenance. On July 6th, 2008, he was reclassified to a maintenance worker 2 for street maintenance. He was promoted to streets foreman on December 7th, 2017 and continues to serve in this capacity today. George Garcia, Public Service Department, celebrating 20 years. George started working for the city of Apopka on December 23rd, 2002. He began as a utility maintenance worker 1 in the Wastewater Collection Maintenance Division for Public Services. Then on December 23rd, 2003, his job title changed to utility service worker 1. On January 12th, 2004, he was reclassified to utility service worker 2 for wastewater collection maintenance. On April 22nd, 2007, he was reclassified again to utility foreman for wastewater collection maintenance. On July 22nd, 2019, he was promoted to utility construction and maintenance manager for the Wastewater Maintenance Division, where he serves today. Next is Marcelino Pizarro Boltron, Recreation Department, celebrating 10 years. Marcelino began his tenure with the city as a standby maintenance worker on August 19th, 2011 with the Recreation Department's Grounds Athletics Complexes Division. On December 2nd, 2012, he joined the team full-time as a maintenance worker 1. On February 11th, 2015, he was promoted to the maintenance worker 2. Marcelino became a ground specialist on February 11th, 2019 and was promoted to grounds foreman on December 27th, 2021, where he serves today. And those are employees celebrating their years of service today. So if we could have the commissioners come up front for a picture? Thank you all very much. We do have a dedicated staff, that is for sure. Okay, approval of minutes. I got, I know there's some concerns about the edits to the minutes, so I want to go over the edits that I made along the way. Uh, let's see, we have on page. It's not by pages. It said 16 championships, there's only six championships. On the following page, it said state, instead of stand. The next page, I wanted to add Mr. Leroy Bell, so we knew which bell it was, and Sylvester Hall to the minutes. Also, there was another one, the next one with Pam Richmond, it says Phil, and I said feel. The next one is on talking about the NIOSH, looking at our investigation of the accident. They had it as a niche, so I know what the N-I-O-S-H. The next item. Then under the noise ordinance, there was not public comment listed, so I've had Susan go back and list, there's two public comments that were there. Next one, we had Commissioner Velasquez asked that. Just loose there, and then down, farther down in the commissioner's report had 200, and it should have been 200,000. And a couple of places on the last page where they had NIOSH instead of NIOSH. So just two scribners errors there. So just so everybody has, that's the edits that I made before, you have the final ones in front of yours. So look for a motion to approve the minutes. Well, the corrections are already in what you've got. Any? Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
And second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor. All right, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, presentations, best foot forward. Who are, Emily, you want to, Pam, you going to introduce or are you going to let Emily just? Well, thanks, I know you were under the weather last, last.
Yes.
Commission meeting, so glad to have you back.
Yes, no, thank you for rescheduling, I appreciate that. December, you know, with holidays comes with all of the other great things like germs and stuff. So I apologize, but feeling much better. I sent her a link to it.
Pam, do you have a different proposal for it?
There should be a link.
I can work on getting that if we want to put this up for a few minutes.
Sure, I'm good with that.
Can we back her up because I can't get that link back to me?
Oh, okay.
She has another link somewhere, but I just have a presentation.
Okay.
No, I, yeah, the presentation's not here, there's a proposal that's here, but I'm not here to discuss that today. I'm here to talk about a different program.
Let me, I can probably get this pretty quick, if we can move on to the next item if we can.
Okay, we can, yeah, we'll, hang on, we'll get, Rob will get, working on that. And Edward, any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Okay, I guess we can start with some public comment, and then we'll, when we get done with public comment, Emily, we'll come back to you. Okay, all right, Susan?
Okay, we have Dennis New.
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street. In accordance with 2016-16, the resolution, I'd like to ask for a little bit of leeway on the four minutes today from the commission. I've got some health issues and I'll get winded before I'm done. First, I'd like to address the applied attempt by the city attorney a couple of meetings ago that someone had suggested a permanent building moratorium. No one has suggested a permanent moratorium. By appearance, it would believe to me that the city attorney believes he works for the mayor and the developers. Funny, I thought he was an employee that worked for and reported to the city council. Yes, last meeting, his interference in the Fire Department Safety Committee was met with deflection and distraction. Maybe it's time for a new attorney who realizes his place is to give advice to the city and not try to run it. Maybe his time would be better spent investigating who from the city signed off on the initial deal with the subsidized income builder. What was suggested is a temporary moratorium until things like the traffic plan could be updated and the work begun, the infrastructure plan and work begun. When the city put a temporary moratorium on dollar stores, no one beat an eye. That cost a family member of mine a contract on some property that was already in the works. You didn't hear him complain, you didn't see him sue the city. By the city's own admission, the traffic plan is years out of date. By the city's own admission, the infrastructure plan is out of date. Why can't there be a hold on the plans until these things are readdressed? I know construction takes time, but just our plans are years out of date. Meanwhile, traffic gets worse, schools get more crowded, and the city gets more load than it can handle. I know they have traffic studies and road design limitations, but let's look at it from a common sense point of view, not an engineering point of view. Seems like all the engineering plans did not help areas like Sheila Oaks, Clear Lake, and other developments with flooding issues. Several months ago, I asked for the mayor to be censored on items relating to zoning, planning, and density changes because of his appearance to be overly involved in the Rock Springs Ridge Land Exchange. Well, apparently, here we are again. A meeting was not posted and accordance with sunshine laws was held. And again, I understand that it's been mentioned there's a possibility of monetary or property incentives that could be used to entice the golf group. When Sheila Oaks flooded, the people were left on their own due to design and engineering floods. When Clear Lake flooded, and it's getting deeper every day, the people are left to pay for it for themselves. So I call again for the mayor to be censored on property issues, zoning changes, density changes, and any item involving city funds for property or city assets. The city does not need to pay the bill for his meddling. We have too many derelict buildings that the city owns. We have water mains that need to be replaced. We have roadways that can't handle the loads. If the commission declares a property excess, then sell it at market value and put the money into infrastructure. You could add the 500,000 from code enforcement fines, since they don't seem to be repairing any of the buildings. In closing, Mr. Wyland and the attorney stopped the safety committee that taxpayers fought so hard to get back into place for the firefighter's death. Whether it was directed by the mayor or not is the question. The purpose of the safety committee is to review and suggest changes in any accident or safety issue. Mr. Wyland and the city's attorney's job is to facilitate it. The state fire marshal has been done, NIOSH is in the works. The safety report should have been completed a long time ago. It's time to be transparent and stop distractions. Last time in Central Florida, we had this kind of meddling in a safety and committee investigation.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
There was a criminal investigation, which led to the mayor and the fire chief.
We appreciate it, thank you. Emily, you want to go ahead, come on up? Is he ready? Are you ready, Rob? Oh, I'm sorry, want to, okay, that's fine.
You want to get the next person up?
Susan?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Todd Banksen, my address is 1444 Stormway Court in Apopka, Florida. Someone once said that facts are stubborn things, or stubborn, sorry. Facts are stubborn things, folks, they never change, so let's look at some facts on a couple of items. In a statement from the mayor, here in council and during his press conference, when he was referencing firefighter Paul Ettraviria's resignation from the safety committee, the mayor would only state, "It was going to be an added task that would take more from my time, more time away from my family." Here is a fact, for some reason, the mayor only mentioned or recalled this one line. The facts are, there were several reasons that existed, and Paul gave them in his full resignation letter that I read in the Apopka Voice. Paul states, "I was informed that a copy of the letter, the one that Wyland wrote and was read by Maynard, was not provided to the safety committee members. The letter was mentioned in the minutes, but was not written in its totality in those minutes of the meeting. This is concerning." Paul also states in his letter, "I already felt uneasy and was troubled about the unannounced meeting with the city attorney," where he suggested that it may not be a good idea to have a critique by the safety committee due to the potential cost to the city with the pending litigation filed by Austin's family. Another item that Paul mentioned was, "Now, even more troubling to me is how the rest of the story has unfolded, and this ad hoc committee has now been formed. The fact that two organizations and a legal team that have absolutely no idea how we function as a fire department and are going to critique a line of duty death of one of our own and exclude the safety committee that was formed in Austin, in the name of Austin, just does not seem right." Here's another item that I'd like to address. In a public statement from the mayor, he said, and I quote, "The last two verified users of that trailer were Chief Carnicelli and District Chief Banksen. So we ought to ask them why they didn't ask to take that trailer out of service." Well, here comes some more of them stubborn facts. Why is the mayor trying to deflect responsibility towards two private citizens who were home at the time of this accident? Sure, I use that trailer, that was my job, and I was scared to death when using it. In the 35 years of my employment, I've used it multiple times, as has many others, and I witnessed it flip multiple times. I did the best I could with what I was given. Also, if the city or the fire administration is truly interested in my account of that sand trailer, why have they not questioned me? Why have they not reached out? The mayor has known that fact that he stated for months now. If someone had truly cared to ask, I would have explained the whole history of it to them. I was here from the beginning. I would have told them that I also asked Chief Carnicelli years back if we could stop using it because of the danger, and he said yes. I would have told them if I was questioned. I would have told them, if I was questioned, that it was emptied of sand and put across the street in mothballs in the Butler Building on the other side of Fifth Street. I would have told them that the crew working the night before Austin's accident was not happy with the sand trailer going back in service, and the senior people told the new kids at the kitchen table, "Do not use that trailer, no matter who calls for it unless there is a senior person around to help. That trailer can kill you." That is a fact. That was said. Mayor Nelson implying that my involvement in using a piece of equipment years ago in the performance of my job contributed to Austin's death is disgusting. One last fact. Chief Carnaselli and myself were not the last two verified users of that sand trailer. Austin and another rookie firefighter were. So here I am. If anyone wants to ask questions about my use of that sand trailer, as the mayor implied, I will answer anything anyone has. No deflections.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, I still have a few seconds left. With that, I'd like to say that retired firefighter Ace Woodham is feeling very under the weather in the hospital, and I wish him a speedy recovery. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Sidney Gerard.
Hello, my name's Sidney Gerard, and my address is 3624 Simonton Place in Lake Mary. Good afternoon. My name is Sidney Gerard, and I'm Austin Duran's girlfriend. I would like to start by saying thank you for your attention and consideration. The reason I have come here today is to implore you to take the necessary, appropriate steps to ensure that an event such as the one that occurred on June 30th, which cost the life of the person I was supposed to spend forever with, never occurs again. While I realize being a firefighter is a dangerous job, Austin did not lose his life due to a heroic act such as running into a burning building to save the life of a little girl or boy. He lost his life due to a piece of equipment that had slipped through the cracks regarding safety practices. I stand here today and beg that the necessary changes be made so another wife, girlfriend, mother, father, sister, brother, or child never have to face the reality we have all been faced with, sacrificing a much-loved member of our community to a painful, unnecessary, and preventable death. This tragedy took Austin's life and has left us with the great grief we now have to bear for the remainder of ours, a future I have lost, our wedding day, our children we were planning to have that will now never be born. In their incredible lifetime we had envisioned before us, again, our suffering was preventable, and it is your responsibility to ensure such tragic loss never happens again, especially due to something that had slipped through the cracks. And let's not forget the other survivors of this tragic event, his coworkers and colleagues, those that were with him as Austin's life hung in the balance, that fought heroically in exceptionally trying circumstances to save the life of their brother. Their lives have been irreparably altered in a manner that brings no peace, each one thinking, "What if this had been me, and why did this have to happen?" Austin was dedicated to giving his dream career everything he had to offer. I remember the countless hours I spent in the car with him driving around Apopka, to the hospitals, each of the fire stations, and through backroads, so he had the confidence that his lacking sense of direction would never hinder him in performing his duties because he knew the magnitude of the responsibility he had accepted in being a first responder for the city of Apopka. He faced everything he committed to with the same drive, commitment, determination, and effort. He always wanted to be as close to perfect as possible, and when he made a mistake, he would beat himself up, then investigate, evaluate, consult, review, and relearn whatever strategies, steps, or principles that he had missed to ensure that he was always improving and becoming the best firefighter he could possibly be. And that's what was expected of him, as it should be. Does the Apopka Fire Department, the city commissioners, the mayor, and all other involved parties and administrators not owe the same to Austin and all the other firefighters that strive to reach this ideal? And they do it for the good of the city and the people in it. How can you hold Austin and his firefighter family to a higher standard than you are willing to hold yourselves? A tragedy has occurred. A mistake was made. We all know that, and we have all had to accept that. However, it is incumbent on you to do as Austin would do: investigate, evaluate, consult, review, and relearn new strategies, steps, and principles to make sure this senseless tragedy cannot and will not be repeated. On June 30th, when I walked into the emergency room to see him after he'd been stabilized, the first thing he said to me was, "I'm sorry." With tears coming out of his eyes swollen shut by the trauma his body had endured, I knew he was saying sorry because he felt bad. He felt bad because in his mind, he was the reason that the lives of everyone present had frozen in time, scared of the intensity and the severity of his injuries, and faced with the uncertainty of the situation with all the pain, fear, doubt, and apprehension that came with it. Even in the moment when he was in more physical pain than you and I could ever imagine, he was still worried about others. That was Austin, always putting others before himself, concerned most with the impact of his actions and how they affected those he cared about. Another of Austin's characteristics was he was the least confrontational person you would ever meet and hated being the center of attention. I find it very unsettling that his death is requiring those of us that loved him most to stand up in an effort to draw attention to the tragedy Austin and all of us have experienced, to ensure that this preventable death and the suffering that came with it never happens to another Apopka firefighter, to insist that the root problem that caused Austin to sacrifice his life is identified, resolved, and eliminated. So this senseless tragedy becomes a lesson in organizational improvements, not mistakes being swept under the rug. This is your most critical responsibility to the citizens, to the firefighters, and especially to Austin. He made the ultimate sacrifice which shed light on the flaws of the current system and where they exist, the flaws that must be addressed. Work has been done, but as I understand, there are still roughly 20 safety concerns that have not been addressed. Please don't let your responsibilities regarding these manners slip through the cracks. The people of Apopka elected you to be our leaders. It is the role of a leader to take responsibility for the negative occurrences in a system, as well as receive the accolades for the successes in the things they do well. The city of Apopka has much to be proud of and much to offer those who love this community. However, we are all dependent on the services provided by the AFD, which fall under your jurisdiction. Please investigate, evaluate, consult, review, and relearn what went wrong, as Austin would do, and then fix it so we never have to go through this again. This is what is expected of our leaders, just as it is expected of our firefighters. Thank you.
Can I just say, thank you, Ms. Sidney, for sharing your sentiments. I know that took a lot, and I just want you to know that... My condolences to you. You were the one person we have not met in this. Thank you for coming today.
Sorry, just need a second. My name is Mike Duran, Claremont, Florida. It saddens me that we must keep this fire raging due to the actions of the city. From June 30th, the day of Austin's incident, I have asked for answers, facts, complete facts, accountability, and responsibility. I would like to set the record straight. We have lost two extremely experienced firefighters from the Austin Duran Safety Initiative Safety Committee. The mayor held a press conference on December 21st to explain a timeline of events. It felt to me that it was held to minimize the death of my son and criticized two highly experienced and trained firefighters who dared to speak out because they cared. All that press conference did was reinforce the failed culture in this fire department. Fractures that I and my family have pushed to seal and bond back together were only made deeper and greater with the mayor's self-serving words. And we wonder why there is a gap between the fire administration and the men and women that work in the stations. It was made loud and very clear that if you stand up and speak your mind, you will be minimized and criticized. It was made clear that this city, this administration, and this fire department is ruled under an iron fist. During the last city council meeting, after I spoke again about my disappointment in the direction that this city was taken, Commissioner Becker began a discussion as to, "Was the safety committee told to stop their investigation?" A yes or no question directly asked to the city, very easy, yes or no, the same question that I have asked myself, not a trick question, yes or no. It was refused an answer. Commissioner Becker pressed for an answer, and the mayor sat quietly. He finally deflected the question to the city attorney, and the city attorney deflected to the fire chief. After that Keystone Cop routine, it was still not made clear who was invited, who made the decision, and why. It was not until the very end during the mayor's report that the mayor finally did speak on this matter, and to an almost empty chamber at that time. And did he speak? Once again, our mayor felt it necessary to cherry pick Pablo's resignation. You all have it now. Again, he criticized both of these fine firefighters. But if that was not enough, he took an uncalled-for opportunity to call out previous fire chiefs from three years ago and a district chief, and then asked why they had not taken the trailer out of service. More deflection, more shifting of responsibility and accountability. No employee is safe in Apopka, nor past employees. And let's not forget, of all the past fire chiefs, all 16 of them, none of them, none of them have lost a firefighter in the line of duty. But this administration, this city, doesn't question this administration? You're correct, Mayor. Facts are stubborn thing. You bragged about being scored out of eight possible violations. The city failed only one. But that is the most important one: training. You minimized it just training. Training of our firefighters for their own safety and the safety of the citizens and feeling only that one made you proud enough to brag during the press conference. I don't care if it was one out of 100. The fact is, that one that the city failed on, that one that Austin needed the most, training, training on a piece of equipment that he had never seen before. Lack of training, lack of supervision, that's what killed my son. He was Apopka. He was your employee, your firefighter, and my son. How many other employees would the city fail, minimize, criticize? How many other employees are we not trying to keep safe by removing the involvement of our very own safety committee? How can we trust that the city will protect their firefighters and their citizens? Actions speak much louder than words, and we are eating our own. When does our family get closure? When do we get to grieve? When can we stop fighting for a better, more safe fire department? Why is it that my family is fighting so hard for the Apopka Fire Department, but the city is not? Reinstate the ability of the Austin Duran Safety Initiative Safety Committee to review this incident. Let them do their job freely. They absolutely can be a part of this so-called ad hoc committee. If three, four, eight, or 20 groups want to investigate, let them. Unless we're trying to hide something. I have reviewed the last 10 line-of-duty deaths, and all of them have committees made up of their own firefighters from that organization. Why is Apopka different? Can one person, Chief Wylem, answer me that? Michael Rodriguez, answer me that? Please allow the committee, named after my son, to investigate and allow my family to return to some sort of life that was taken from us that began on June 30th.
So I share the same sentiment as when. After the last meeting, I did ask the question around, was there explicit instruction to stop that safety committee? The first response... Well, the answer was in the affirmative, but when I asked if there was written instruction, as our minutes that we just passed reflect, it was a first and no answer. When pressed further, it turned into a yes answer. I made a public records request on December 22nd, the day after the meeting, and I finally got that records request satisfied as of yesterday. A paper copy, written, date stamped, received January 3rd from the clerk's office. I'll just read it real quick. And I'll read it with the grammatical errors that are included in it, so I just want to read it word for word. "Good afternoon. Understanding the need for an urgent and independent review of Austin Duran's LODD, Line of Duty Death, and in accordance with SOG 6200.03.00, I have created and have been working with and ad hoc review board that will be solely responsible for this investigation. Due to the sensitivity and the need to conduct a thorough investigation, the review board consists of subject matter experts and includes the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health, as we've consistently referred to as NIOSH, GANON Emergency Services, and legal representation." No signing of that letter. It's purely on a Word document with that text only, not signed by Chief Wylem or any other individual. When I pressed the question last meeting, I don't know that we were referred to an ad hoc committee separate from the safety committee. So my question today is, when are we going to get a formal report of findings from our own internal safety committee, which was my desire last meeting? This ad hoc committee from NIOSH, from GANON, from legal representation, when are we going to, as a city council, going to have a formal presentation made to us to feel that we've got comfort, that we're doing right by the families that were involved in this tragedy, as well as the other people in this room that still serve today? When? I want a date. When? When should we expect... Or else we're going to sit in these chambers and hear from aggrieved family and union representatives, people that rely on the leadership in the city to make sure that they're safe in their working conditions. So when should we expect that? And I'm looking at Chief Wy... The only... There's one person in the room that I would expect that answer from.
Sean Wylem, Fire Chief, City of Apopka. To answer your questions, the ad hoc committee is something that is a advisory group that is in our SOGs that we're allowed to create in order to get some of the answers. I think, again, the biggest thing I want to separate out is the difference between an investigation and post-incident critique. Answers for the investigation are come... We've had one answer already with the state fire marshal's report, and that came out. We've been told by NIOSH that it's going to be anywhere from six to eight months. We've been told by NIOSH that it's going to be anywhere from six to eight months. GANON services that we're utilizing, anywhere from one to two months from now. That entire conglomerate.
From now or sometime in January?
It should be some, it should be one to two months from now, is what we were told. There's, there's, again, all this coming together as a conglomerate to kind of give us the recommendations moving forward. Everything that we've learned thus far, we're making changes. We are making a lot of positive changes. So there's, it's hard to know the exact timeline with things like NIOSH, because again, it takes time, GANON thinks, things take time.
My, I'm perplexed when the notice that I just read starts with understanding the need for an urgent and independent review. How come those instructions were only given in, not at the time of the formation of the safety committee, but much later, as reflected in the minutes of that safety committee?
Well, because I understand, we are all hurting. I think that's the biggest thing that I get, how emotional this is for everybody involved. The Duran family, to all of our firefighters, to me personally, it is emotionally taxing. And I am trying to balance everything with getting us the right answers and getting us to move forward in the right way, in the right direction. But these things take time. I don't want to just check a box. I don't want to come up here and fill you with whatever. A formal investigation has taken place, first with the state fire marshal, second with NIOSH, who's a subject matter expert who's going to tackle that, and thirdly, GANON is taking a holistic approach, look at our city and our fire department, everything.
But I haven't had time to research what Mr. Duran just said in terms of the last ten line-of-duty deaths in the state, but if those safety committees are all staffed by members of their department, why do we not take the same approach?
They conduct a post-incident critique. Firemen don't normally, firemen do not investigate. If we respond to something, the post-incident critique is going to look at how we responded to the scene, to the incident itself. So time starts when, as soon as the tones go off, to kind of answer that. I am also trying to balance the emotional side of things. We've all read the letter that came out yesterday. People are torn in two. I have half the department who wants this to happen, half the department doesn't want it to happen. I am trying to do everything we can and balance everything to get us the right answers, to move us forward in the right direction. And quite frankly, I'm tired of being torn apart. I want, no, I'm facing you guys right now. All the outside noise, we need to come, you want to talk about culture and changing culture, we have to come together. We have to. We have to come together and work together with this and getting these things done and getting some answers. We're working side by side with some of these recommendations. To give you the right answer, six to eight months is NIOSH, all the other, I promise you, we're going to make several presentations on a lot of the findings. I want to be here, I want to make these changes, and more so for you guys to hear that.
The timing, the timing of these things, I mean, the optics are terrible. I mean, you wait several months to stand down the safety committee that were doing that investigation post-injury critique, I don't know the terminology to use, but several months, and it was under the advisement, under your interpretation, not the attorney saying it explicitly, but under your interpretation, that it was not in good keeping to make sure that we, you know, save ourselves from litigation. And so that was what the genesis of the conversation was. And so, again, why are we not letting our own people investigate our own policies and procedures? Yeah, you mouth off the fire marshals, NIOSH, GANON. Okay, but your own department is saying that they want to investigate.
Not all of them. Not all of them.
A good number. The fire department is unionized. They have a union group, and that speaks for, you know, in the words of a union, it speaks for the group that's, its membership. So if the union, and I see union personnel in here tonight, I'm not sure if they're speaking or not, but if they do, from where I sit, I have to assume that they represent the members of that particular union. And in my case, that would be a majority of the people in your department. So, again, I just don't have any sense of, okay, GANON's going to be one to two months, NIOSH is going to be six to eight months. History as a guide, we're going to get to these places, and it's going to be, oh, it's another couple more weeks. We're not providing any sort of relief to anybody. We're going to hear the same commentary every single city council meeting.
If things were stagnant and we were not making changes, I can see a big issue, obviously. But there are positive things that are happening. We've started, and those positive changes take time. You know, there's something, I get, we're hammered, we're hammered for a lot of different things on social media, on all kinds of different stuff, even.
Honestly, rightfully so, because look, look at it, again, Mr. Brankston's not wrong, or Mr. Duran's not wrong, look at this piece of paper. The pink outlined section is Pablo's remarks. The spirit of this email is not what was represented in that press conference two weeks ago. So the optics, all things, when you take things in totality, it doesn't, to me, ring true that we're operating in good faith. We're spin doctoring and picking and choosing language to use when we represent this thing to the public. And, and I'll just have it noted for the record, I mean, you were given an opportunity to speak during that press conference, and you chose not to. You're the leader of this department.
Thank you, Chief.
Anybody else, Susan?
Sylvester Hall.
First of all, Happy New Year. How everybody doing? Haven't seen you since last year. Good to see you again. My name is Sylvester Hall, 3091, Rolling Hills Lane, Apopka, Florida. 2023. 2023 is here. And I'm looking at the carryover from 2022. To the Apopka Fire Department Police Chief, yes, we do need to come together. We do need to come together as one. But just your statement saying that half of the police, half of the fire department want the investigation and half don't, that's very troubling to me. I'm a retired veteran. I served for 21 years, United States Navy, proudly. And in a moment, anybody serving could get that phone call, it's time to go to war. Will you gladly put your life in danger for the sacrifice for the good of the country? Now, these firefighters and police officers, they do it every day. Every day they wake up, they could, they could get a call that may require them to lose their life. And this is the thanks that they get. To the fire chief, we had to beg you to take the money to make the upgrades. So when you come to us and try to give us good faith, it just doesn't sound truthful to me. Now I want to switch gears real quick. This may go over some of your heads. I've made this statement many times before, there are too many good people standing by watching bad things happen, and not saying anything, just being silent, not speaking out. And to the Duran family, I want to apologize for my role in your son's death. And here's where I'm going with this. I am tired of being a coward. I am tired of being a hypocrite. The only reason these things are happening to us today in the City of Apopka is because we have just turned a blind ear to what's going on in the city. And I say we had 35,000 registered voters, and only eight of them turned out for the mayor election. Only 8,000 turned out for the mayor election, out of 35,000 registered voters. So we get what we select. We get what we select. The mayor won the election with, split over what, 4,000 votes? And I'm being generous. Out of 35,000 people? So we get what we deserve. And that's sad, but it's the hard truth. And I hope this day, each and every one of us realize we have a civic debt to this city, to be the best neighbor and to stand up for our neighbors. We owe them that. We owe each other that. If you don't understand the big picture, how will you ever understand the consequences of your decisions? Right now, we don't understand in the City of Apopka, the City of Apopka is run by the mayor. The mayor shares what he wants to share with the commissioners. And so when you look at everything that's going on, it's a direct vision of our mayor. Thank you.
Next up, Susan.
Albert McKimme, 3603, Golden Gem Road, Apopka. Back to uncontrolled development and its repercussions. Golden Gem just happens to be the one that I'm going to speak about today. It's representative of what's happening within the city limits. Let's use Golden Gem Road as a prime example of why the city is failing the community. Take one development where construction of homes has begun, Parkview Preserve. We can argue over numbers, but just look at it logically. These are large homes and have two and four childrens potentially per house. 282 homes, let's say a development of 500 children. No public transport, no sidewalks. So what if a child wants to visit a friend and perhaps they could cycle? Except Golden Gem Road stretches from Ponkin to Kelly Park, approximately two miles long, double yellow lines end to end, no roads leading off it, and hardly sufficient room for two cars to pass. We have been driven off the road on three occasions during the last year. There are no passing places, so how can a motor vehicle overtake a cyclist or even a pedestrian without potentially breaking the law? If a vehicle got behind a cyclist traveling at eight miles an hour for two miles, that's potentially 15 minutes they could be forced to follow them. You're welcome to argue with me, but you cannot dispute simple arithmetic. And neither will you tell me that human nature is such that it would not overtake. People make errors of judgment. Golden Gem Road is full of dips and rises. There are numerous places where blind spots exist. If cyclists are forced to use Golden Gem Road as it is, there will be accidents. When you build a subdivision without first creating infrastructure for public transport, sidewalks, safe roads for cyclists to commute on, you might as well put gates at the entrance and exits and call them concentration camps. You are sentencing our children to a nightmare existence, where they are forced to stay indoors, play video games, surf the net, and to do many other inappropriate things because you deny them the fundamental right that we had when we were children. Just take a look at Jack DeMartin's memories as a child. Ask Wilson Hamrick what he did as a youngster. Ask Dennis New where he played and swam. Why do you think we, as the older generation, are fighting hard to protect Apopka from uncontrolled development? We believe our children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren deserve the opportunity to experience fresh air, dirt, mud, farm life, and wildlife that the developers wish to take from us. We are not interested in greenback dollar bills. We prefer a green environment where rivers, valleys, trees, and freshwater springs. What we have here in Apopka and Wakiva is priceless. Disney, SeaWorld, Universal pale into insignificance with respect to our natural beauty. In essence, Golden Gem Road is a liability. Our mayor lacks integrity. Our planning department lacks capability. Our city attorney lacks credibility. This administration lacks accountability. All that stands between us and a state of chaos is our commissioners. My question for our commissioners today is, how will you ensure the safety of these new residents on Golden Gem Road without a coherent formulated transport plan? You will be forced, you will be faced with a significant number of children and residents in development for a new road. It will not be built for a number of years. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just because I know that Commissioner Moore watches these hearings, and I brought it up a couple meetings ago, I met with Orange County staff on December 8th to talk about the current condition of Golden Gem, because the majority of Golden Gem is a county road. They were going to be doing an assessment of the street. I followed up twice with them after that meeting, and I've not heard back. So I'll continue to be persistent on that front in terms of just the general current maintenance of that road. But I will join you at a Board of County Commissioners meeting if we want to go together and advocate for that, because, you know, long-term, and I had this conversation with Ms. Richmond at our prep meeting yesterday, but to your point, long-term, we need to have a transportation plan. I've been promised that that's been, that's forthcoming, so that we can do these things, you know. In all fairness to our attorney, you know, a broad, a broad development moratorium is a tall task, but a moratorium in terms of my no vote is not as tall. And if I don't have assurances that we're, we're set up for success long-term, then certainly committed to that.
Tanya De Jesus. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tanya De Jesus. I live in the Willow Lake Apartments. And there is a traffic issue at this exit, at this exit of the gate.
Closer to the mic, please, ma'am. Thank you.
There's two lanes that go towards Apopka and the other one goes towards Wakiva. Traffic makes U-turns there on both directions, and we have tons of elderly people, children and such going across that section.
Can you go back? I'm sorry, I didn't, which, where are we talking about?
Willow Lake Apartments.
Where?
Willow Lake Apartments.
Oh, the Willow Lake Apartments.
Okay.
And so, children and elderly adults in their walkers as well, cross that section of the high, of the road, where there is no crosswalk, no traffic light, no flashing light, nothing where people are aware that they're crossing the road. To walk to the crosswalk that is available to the residents in the area, they have to walk at least a quarter of a mile, one way, a quarter of a mile, back up the way to go to the shopping center across the street, which has everything from marshals to dentist's office to IP location, grocery stores, and everything is very accessible to the Willow Lake community, but not in a very accessible way. So I just would like to have you guys, or someone, engineers or somebody, look at that location and see if anything could be done. There's been several accidents there with cars, but there's a lot of children and people walk, walk across there.
Unfortunately, I think that's a county road, but we still, Pam, if you put that down, I think it's a county.
Okay.
In that county? Yeah, but, but we can, we can help you get to the right people to help, you know, with that situation.
That would be great.
You betcha.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for coming out.
Hey, Alex Pepper.
Thank you.
Anybody have a question? Good afternoon. My name's Alex Klepper. I'm representing the Apopka professional firefighters this afternoon.
I'm representing the Apopka professional firefighters this afternoon. Come together was just said. I'm going to say that before I read this speech. So recently, two of our members, one of them who happens to be myself, resigned from a voluntary committee due to what they perceive to be disingenuous leadership and intentional misdirection. In the wake of these resignations, instead of the fire chiefs or mayor following up with these employees, the decision was made to call a press conference to disparage both these firefighters, cherry pick four to five words from letters to make them look foolish or as if they did not care, and then take credit for changes forced upon this administration. Here's the unsettling part. Mayor, in a certain sense, I feel bad for you. As you stated, you were given a script to read to the press with the aim of publicly embarrassing our firefighters written by our own fire chiefs, which is just so wrong and sad, but you're taking the heat. You kept referring to the fact that there were claims that nothing had been done and directing the attention towards eighteen out of twenty-three items that were alleged completed, which is categorically false. The two resigned employees are well aware of the status of these processes. But what was actually asserted in that resignation letter is that we have made recommendations that members of the committee or the fire chief know about, but no other member of this fire department is aware of. That information is in the packet I gave you. Here's an example. Every summer, we hold a fire camp. At the end of that week, for every age group, we send unrestrained or improperly restrained children up in a tower truck bucket, stories into the air for a Facebook photograph. We have had a catastrophic failure of a tower ladder five to six years ago. That's how we have the new one. It can happen again, and our city will be sued into the stone age where sovereign immunity does not apply. It was written in your press release that this practice has been discontinued, yet the department has not had one single communication to let anyone know. I have asked multiple members that operate the tower truck and work the kids camp if they are aware, and only one of them was aware. That is what upset us, and that's what killed Austin Duran. People knew that sand trailer was dangerous. People knew it should not be used, and nothing was ever officially communicated or done to eliminate the threat. And again, we've been failed. But let's get to the heart of why both members resigned because it wasn't addressed. The committee was ready to investigate and put our own eyes on Austin's injury and subsequent death. We must try to determine the why. You cannot cure an illness by treating the symptoms. Driving a trailer through a thousand cones and putting Austin's names on thing does not fix the root problem. The plan was to put this together with all other findings and give this to every single new firefighter that ever crosses our threshold for them to read, learn from, so we never end up here again. The plan received a unanimous vote. Then again, we were failed. All of this shading has happened. Surprise attorney meetings, disappearing letters, unsigned directives, reinterpreted policies, and a shell game of who's taking responsibility. That is why we left. You cannot have a safety committee quietly control it from the outside and not take responsibility for your decisions. We feel like we're living in an alternate reality sometimes. It's insane. You know, we all wear this kid's name on our wrist. His family's here. Every council meeting, as his dad said, can we just let them go home? Why do we have to come here and fight for every single step forward? We're sick and tired of being accused of blindsiding people. Hearing both sides need to improve communication, no. Lack of communication is when two members resign from a safety committee with serious concerns and instead of meeting with them, to rectify that situation, our chief goes searching for replacements, calls a press conference to disparage them, and then refuses to comment. It's unbelievable. We have the audacity to speak about culture change at this department? If past behavior is the best predictor of future performance? Answer me. How can we expect anyone else to speak up if this is how you're treated? Members of this department bring their concerns to either us or Mike Duran. This week, Mike, not our chief's administration, received an anonymous letter asking for help, expressing personal concerns about lacking mental health resources for department members, and even concerns about the investigation. What does that say to you? Why is, why is that the outlet that they feel they need to take? You know, you said we left the safety committee rather than commit to furthering positive change in this department? You know, if you want to create lasting positive change, and you're looking for the employees who are not going to cower when things get hard and not shy away from their responsibilities, we're here.
Thank you.
We're being failed, and we can't afford to keep our heads in the sand. One more thing. An anonymous letter said it was one person sent an anonymous letter to Mr. Duran, and that's what was just being cited as half of the department not wanting to do an investigation. If there's a question, then let's just do a vote. Right? Maybe I'm, maybe we're nuts. Maybe everybody in this room is out of control. I don't think that one anonymous letter constitutes half of the fire department.
Okay, we're going to go back to the presentation, Best Foot Forward with Emily Hannah. Emily, come on forward.
Down. Sorry about that earlier. Couple things that I had sent Pam. So my name is Emily Hannah. I am the executive director of Bike Walk Central Florida. We are a nonprofit advocacy organization in the three county region that advocates for pedestrian safety, bicycle safety and education, along with trail development and design. And today I'm here to talk to you and give you a summary of your pedestrian safety program, Best Foot Forward. So Best Foot Forward is a region-wide pedestrian safety program that focuses on, we call a six E approach, but we're really going to focus on the four Es today. And that is engineering at crosswalks, making sure that they stand out in place. We also do education at our crosswalks and throughout the region, and specific to the city of Apopka, to ensure that we're educating residents on the driver yield law and how to be safe pedestrian cyclists and drivers in the community and in the region. And then lastly, we conduct regional enforcement operations throughout the year with other counterparts and the police departments throughout the region. And I've got some numbers of what we've worked on this past year, so I'm presenting to you today last fiscal year. So this will be October of 2021 through September of last year. So the enforcements, we conducted two of those high visibility enforcement operations. We bring the media out, the elected officials, you guys come out and join us at these enforcement operations. And we do these at crosswalks that we monitor for evaluation over the time. We've held two details to date and have issued fifteen warnings and citations. What I like to say about the warnings and citations is it's not so much that we're giving out these citations to, you know, tell drivers that they're failing at following the law. It's more about education. So with every citation or warning or every type of interaction that we have with a motorist during our enforcement operations, we give them educational material so that they know why they're being pulled over, and hopefully they won't make that same mistake again. Because God forbid that they actually fatally strike someone while driving, and that's what we want to try to prevent. We've completed ten events and presentations, reached twenty-two hundred people, and I handed out thirty-eight hundred, almost thirty-nine hundred different materials, and I'll explain a little bit more detail for that later. And then for our engineering and evaluation, we monitored five crosswalks within the city of Apopka this year. Did a total of thirty data collections, which I'll talk about in more detail. And we supported a couple different projects additionally in the city of Apopka, which I will talk about as well. But some big program highlights. So the Best Foot Forward program's actually started in 2012 in Orange County, City of Orlando, and the city of Winter Park with a grant from Orlando Health and the Winter Park Health Foundation. And so in April of 2022, we celebrated ten years of being a pedestrian safety program in the region. And in doing so, we wanted to bring everybody together to talk about pedestrian safety and the ten years that we've worked together in the region. We brought down a national recognized speaker that actually developed the program twelve years ago before we launched it and had him speak to what he, the research that he's done. He's from the University of Minnesota. And the work that he's done with the various transportation departments throughout the United States, bringing back some of that expertise to make us improve the Best Foot Forward program in the future years. And so we had this inaugural Best Foot Forward Summit where we brought everybody together. So the city of Apopka joined with everybody from the city of Kissimmee, St. Cloud, city of Orlando to talk about what everyone's doing to help prevent and enhance our pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. So these are the crosswalks that we monitored last year in the program. We have identified the crosswalks for this year's program. They're, they're changed, and so we will give you that information in your first progress report, which will be due at the end of this month for this year's program. But these are the five that we monitored. And this was really the first year that we worked with the city of Apopka fully with the Best Foot Forward program. So this year was really about understanding the city of Apopka's needs, what, where was development occurring? Where were some traffic fatalities, serious injuries occurring? What types of interactions and conflicts were happening? And so these were kind of where we started, but we know, and I'll go into detail, that this is not where we're ending, right? All crosswalks, every road in the city of Apopka deserves the attention that we're giving from an education, engineering, evaluation, and enforcement standpoint. But we know that the work we do spreads throughout the community. And so we know that if we focus on certain areas, we will hopefully improve the driver behavior throughout the city and hopefully throughout the region. Because we know there are people that drive through the city of Apopka, just like every other city. So we want to make sure they're abiding by all the laws of the state of Florida. And so engineering, so I kind of started with, we're getting to know the city of Apopka this year, really identifying what some of those issues are. And one of the big issues, as we know, is your main street, US four forty-one. We've had several fatalities and serious injuries along that roadway, unfortunately, one recently. And so we really wanted to bring FDOT to the table, talk with the city staff and the local police, the Apopka Police Department as to what are some of the concerns, concerns there? And how can we, how can we fix those? Now, I will say modifying a state road as, as big and as dense as US four forty-one is, is quite a task. But it's a task that we are all undertaking. And I'm excited to share some of those updates with you later on in the presentation. But during this site visit, we walked with the mayor along US four forty-one and crossed at McGee because that is where you have some future development going in. So we wanted to look at that intersection ahead of when that development was going to take place to really see what the needs were there. And so during that time, and Mayor, you can speak to this, we were almost struck by a car crossing the crosswalk along US four forty-one at McGee. A driver did not want to wait at the right-hand turning movement, so he went around the right-hand turning driver in between the bike lanes and the excess space that we have in some of those lanes on the right-hand side, and almost struck our data collector. Luckily, he does this for a living, so he knew to look out and avoided the car. And luckily, the Apopka Police Department got his license plate, and he was warned that he should not do that in the city of Apopka. So just an example as to why education and the engineering and evaluation that we do is really critical. So we started there in January, and I'll give you some updates on what we're doing with US four forty-one since then. Because that's not really a part of the Best Foot Forward program right now. We didn't really identify any crosswalks there because we have a longer vision in place. But we did go and evaluate those crosswalks that were, that we were monitoring. We looked at the striping, the signage, we looked at the context. And what I mean by context is what's around that crosswalk? Why would people cross the road? Where's their origin? Where's their destination? And then where are they going back to? And we want to identify that in order to identify what's striping, what's signage, what additional measures that we need to install to make sure that driver sees that pedestrian trying to cross the road. So here we are at Jason Dwelly, going to the beautiful regional park that's there. Tons of people cross that crosswalk. We were just there in November doing an enforcement. And so we talked to a lot of the community, and they were really excited that we were enforcing that crosswalk because it often is a little dangerous to cross to go to the park there. So we've worked with Pam and her team put together a crosswalk, we call it our CIP, Crosswalk Improvement Plan, to put together the striping and the signage that is cost-effective and can be efficient for the city to install. And then we can go back and evaluate the data as to whether or not that has increased the visibility for pedestrians and for drivers. So our operations that we hold, we do four time, we do four large enforcements every year. We do these across the region. So we ask our local law enforcement partners, do you have the availability to participate? Where would you like to enforce your crosswalks? And we do this through thirteen different law enforcement agencies, usually within a two-day period. So it's quite, quite a big operation to undertake. But the city of Apopka has been, and the Apopka Police Department has been absolutely fantastic to work with. I cannot say enough great things about your police department. And I work with many of them, and I could say, you know, good and bad about all, but they have been fantastic. Sergeant Harmon has been wonderful to work with and has been passionate about really making improvements in the engineering, the evaluation, and the education as well. So much so that the city of Winter Park was a little hesitant about doing enforcement operations in their city. So they came to watch the city of Apopka in their enforcement operation this past year. And the city of Winter Park has joined the program because of that fantastic work from the Apopka Police Department. So kudos to them. Really looking forward to the enforcement operations that we're going to have throughout the rest of this year. We do theme those enforcement, the operations every year. This one coming up in November, I'm sorry, in February, it's going to be Crosswalk Appreciation Day. We're kind of calling out that a lot of drivers fail to yield to crossing guards near schools. We actually have data that represents that we have drivers that are least likely to yield in a quarter mile of a school versus a half a mile away from a school because they're expecting to have those crossing guards there. But those crossing guards put their lives into their hands to stop traffic so that these kids can get to school, so they can walk and bike and have healthy lives. Someone we just heard talking about that. That's what we want to see. So that's why we theme these. We also theme them for our media so we can get a lot of the media outlets out and to cover the operation in order to, again, educate our residents that we've got to stop and let people cross the road. We've got to be civil to our community, to the kids and the seniors that are trying to get to the places they need to go. And then our outreach efforts, so we had, we attended ten different events and presentations throughout the year. Twenty-two hundred interactions. So we actually count how many times we talk to individual people. This is not the number of attendees at an event. This is specific interactions of us talking to someone about the driver yield law, about pedestrian safety, about bicycle safety and habits. So these are actual interactions, actual talking points. And then the thirty-nine hundred educational materials distributed is either the educational material we hand out throughout the program, so talking about the driver yield law and what the rules are on the road. But then also we'll do some helmet fittings. We'll also hand out some safety information from FDOT. And we have lighted bracelets and other cool safety things that we hand out as well. So hopefully you've seen us at one of the events this past year. We've also been out this year as well and hope to continue as we do more events and presentations this fiscal year. So this year, our, the program has already kicked off. We kicked off in October. We're going to hold three enforcements within the city of Apopka. We've already held one. That was in November. And that was at Jason Dwelly. It was a great enforcement. We've got five crosswalks that we're going to monitor in the program, among others, which I'll talk about in a minute. And we're going to do eight events and presentations to the community. A little bit less than what we did last year, but we really feel like if we target specific audiences, we have a better interaction, a better opportunity to change kind of behavior and educate on that driver yield law. But there are some additional things that Bike Walk Central Florida, the nonprofit, is doing. So besides the pedestrian safety program, Best Foot Forward, Bike Walk Central Florida has a, an opportunity or has been doing opportunities of looking at networks for active transportation. We were really lucky to work with Dr. Phillips in their new Packing District project and look at creating a network of internal and external trails that eventually connect the Packing District to the Coast to Coast Trail, to the Downtown Connector Loop, to the hospital, to Create a Village, and so on. And with that success, we, and I, you know, I being in the city and loving the city of Apopka and working with you guys, I thought, you know, we really need to do this here. There's a lot of development. There's a lot of opportunity. You're extending the West Orange Trail. So what, why can't we come in and look at where all the active transportation network could be? And where we can start building that transportation network so that we're not relying on vehicles to get to places that we want to go? We can get out and walk. We can get out and bike or roll scooters, strollers, whatnot, to where we want to be. There's lots of statistics, anywhere from seventy to ninety percent of our trips are within one to three miles of our home. That's an easy walk, bike, or roll distance. So let's build that supportive infrastructure so that we can get people there safely and efficiently. And so I kind of skipped over the US four forty-one visioning study, but that is essentially what I've described as the active transportation network analysis. So we're going to work with Pam and the city of Apopka, you all, and your community as to where they want to walk, where they want to bike, and where they want to roll. We're not just going to come in and look at your street network and say, oh, you're missing sidewalk here. You need to put it there. No, we want to ask the community, where do you want to go? Do you want to use the trail? Where do you need to connect to the trail? Find those connections, and then not only just identify those connections, but where else can we add supportive amenities to encourage people to get out of their vehicles and use that active transportation network that you guys are putting together? And so that includes things like shading. Where are the street trees going to go? How big are they? Where should they be located? We're going to do that as well. We're going to identify opportunities for trail, trailheads within the city of Apopka. Again, where is there an opportunity for you to park your car if you're too far away with your bike or with your family? And get out and have access to the great trail system and the parks and other wide sidewalks within the city of Apopka. So that's really our active transportation network analysis. We're going to do that throughout this year. So I'm really excited to kick that work off with you. We will be back in front of you talking about this work. We'll have workshops. We'll do the public engagement as well, so you'll hear a lot more about this. But really excited to take this work on because of the growth that you've had in your city in the last several years. Really need to look at where we want to incentivize and further accentuate those active transportation networks. And then lastly, so I'm a graduate from the UCF Masters of Urban and Regional Planning Program. And when I was at the city of Castleberry, I had the opportunity to bring their capstone class in to do a project for the city. They created a health element into the city's comprehensive plan. They created a health element into the city's comprehensive plan. Now, the city and anything that they do has kind of a health overall element to it, so it has to tie into the health of the community. But UCF actually approached me recently and said, we, we need a project. Emily, do you have any suggestions? You gave us a couple other great ones, what do you have? And I said, oh, I have the perfect project. We really want to do something along US 441. There's a great need out here, the roadway context, how the road is built is not a main street for the city of Apopka. Absolutely not. It is built to move cars and move them fast, and not for people to stay and linger and shop and enjoy the downtown of Apopka. It's not really much of a downtown. And so we asked the UCF capstone class to make that their project, and they agreed. And so this last semester, so they started in August and they wrapped up in December, they'll kick off again next week and will wrap up end of April. So it's a year-long project. And what they're doing is they're meeting with stakeholders, they're going to do the community engagement as well, but they're going to identify what the future opportunities of US 441 could look like, from a demographic standpoint, from economic development standpoint, from active transportation, from beautification, signage. And then ultimately, we are including FDOT in these conversations. So FDOT has been at the table since August, and they have heard the presentations from the students of the existing conditions and the study research that they've done thus far, and will continue to be a part of this project. Because we can't make changes to US 441 without FDOT, Florida Department of Transportation. It's their roadway. And we need to bring them to the table so that they see the importance of fixing that roadway sooner rather than later, because we don't need another fatality or a serious injury on that roadway. We're tired of that. The city of Apopka deserves better than that, and we want FDOT to come to the table and do better than that. And they are, in other communities. So why not here in Apopka? And so that's been kind of my advocacy that I've been working on, is to make sure that they are coming to the table, that they are paying attention and listening to what we are putting together as a vision for US 441, what the city of Apopka wants, to see their main street look like in the future. And then we are going to continue to advocate for FDOT to make those changes. We're hoping that we come up with a capital improvement plan, both interim and a long-term solution, so that we can retrofit this road to be the true main street that the city of Apopka wants and needs as you continue to grow. So that is my presentation today of all the work that BikeWalk and the Best Foot Forward Program have been doing in your city. And as always, we appreciate being a part of all the work that you guys do. You're doing a fantastic job. I say this, you know, but I do work with other communities that aren't doing what you're doing, and that is putting your best foot forward. So thank you.
Any questions for Emily?
No, just, just want to say, obviously, I've attended every meeting since I've been elected, what you guys have done, and I love the program. Being someone that often runs or is on the sidewalks, I understand the safety aspect of it and how close I've been hit multiple times. So definitely appreciate your program, and, and I know that we in Apopka have had a lot of fatalities recently and injuries. Just driving here today, right next to Kintland Nelson Park, there was, I saw there was a bike under a car. So it's just, it's needed. And so I'm excited to help support you throughout this process.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
And we're excited that you chose Apopka to bring this program to help us to make our pedestrian traffic a whole lot better. So thank you, and we look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Becker?
Thank you.
Mr. Velasquez?
Well, you actually heard from one of the residents here who said that, and she's right, that's the residential develop, housing development right next to the bowling alley. And I can't imagine, I see it all the time, where they're just kind of running across, you know, what are they, four lanes? And, you know, just thankful that there's a medium in between that they can kind of rest on when they can't beat the traffic. But we have, I saw the, the crosswalks that you were working on, but there's a couple of crosswalks that, crosswalks that I feel that really need some attention.
Sure.
How do I get those crosswalks?
So if you would, if you would like to send an email with those locations to Pam, she can forward that to us and we can evaluate those.
Yeah. I think she knows which one I'm talking about, which is the one on Welch, and where Walgreens, and we're having that new development, what is it, Circle K, Publix, and the bank, and, you know, that Four Corners. I mean, when I shop at Publix, and sometimes I need to go to Walgreens, I would love to walk across to Walgreens, but I literally get back in my car to drive that little short distance just so I can get there safely. So that's a crosswalk that I feel that needs a lot of attention.
We will look into that, and I hope in the future that you do feel comfortable getting, not in your car, but walking across that intersection.
Yeah. Well, you know, I, I hope this program continues. I do support it. We do have, if you drive from here all the way up to Ponkin, we have all these schools along the way. And it's very important, because we want to encourage the students to ride to their schools, to walk to schools. And if you've been here at 3:00 and you see when they all exit out of these schools, and it's, it's, you know, it's a big concern.
Absolutely.
But, like you said, we have to start somewhere, and I appreciate it. I appreciate that you have chosen Apopka to try and address this, this, I'm just going to say a problem. But I realize that we need the attention and we need to fix some of the road. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Emily. Appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
All right. Next up, we've got five motion agenda items. Does anybody need to have any of them pulled? If not, look for motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Low Family Warehouse. Okay, that's...
That's the one.
Good afternoon, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the Low Family Trust Warehouse Major Development Plan. The property is located at 3838 Hog's Head Road, west of Herman Smith Road, and south of Hog's Head Road and east of Conrad. The aerial shows that the project is surrounded by industrial centers. The Low Family Ware, the Low Family Trust Warehouse is located just east of Conrad and west of Herman Smith Road. That major development plan proposes the development of an industrial center that includes the proposal to construct one building and five future buildings. The applicant proposes a warehouse and office for storage and distribution uses with 66,000 square feet of area on approximately 19 acres. Current proposed building on the northwest corner of the property will support online retail operations of plant-related merchandise. While 15 parking spaces are required for this building, the applicant is proposing a total of 39 parking spaces with two accessible spaces. The proposed maximum building height is 35 feet. The future, the development of future buildings will undergo separate development reviews. The DRC recommends approval and adds meeting on December 13, 2022. Planning Commission on a 4-1 vote recommended approval of the Low Family Trust Warehouse Major Development Plan, subject to the findings in the staff report. The recommended motion is to approve the major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Jean?
There was a 4-1 vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Why was there a descending vote? One descending vote?
There was a request to move the accessible parking spaces a little closer to the entrance.
Okay.
And I think that is something that the applicant is going to explore at the construction site plan. But in terms of, by the review of the Building Division and Engineering, I think it meets accessibility requirements at this time, whatever they're proposing on their plan right now.
Okay. I think I do remember that, where...
Do we know what they plan on storing in the building?
Right now, they're operating an online plant. It's a retail, well, it's online retail sales of plant materials.
And so they are moving the, the...
They're exploring it. They're going to look at the slope and the grade of, I think they're going to do it through construction site plan.
Okay.
But right now, as it is, it meets it, it meets accessibility requirements.
Okay. I think it would be beneficial to, if somebody on the Planning Commission cares about it, they obviously care for a reason. So if we can oblige them in some capacity, I think it'd be beneficial, as long as it meets the same code.
Absolutely.
And requirements there. So that'd be my only comment.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the major development plan for the Low Family Warehouse.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, First Amendment Developers Agreement for Alterna Property. Pam?
Yes, good afternoon. This is the First Amendment to the Alterna Development Agreement. When the original agreement was, was adopted, the, or approved, the cost of the intersection improvement had not yet been calculated. And costs go up and down depending on materials. So when we got the final cost, we negotiated impact fee credits in the amount of $860,000 and some change. The full cost of, of the intersection improvement, which is installing the signal and installing signals at the railroad crossing and turn lanes is in excess of $1.5 million. And we have offered to give impact fee credits in the amount of $860,000. This is a forward-thinking project. It might not appear that right now we need that signal, but what we all know is going to happen out there with regard to development, if we wait until we need it, we'll be three years away from a signal. They offer to do it while they're doing the rest of their development, and my recommendation is that you approve the impact fee credit agreement of $860,000.
Any questions for Pam?
Does this one, and I should have asked you this prior to this, I'm sorry, I just thought of it now, there's a development going on the north side of that, Tyler Crusades, I think?
On the north side of...
Of 441, sorry. Because that's where this is, correct?
This is, you know, where the entrance to the airport is?
Yeah.
It's, it's that intersection. This development will be right behind that.
Will it align with that, then? With like their...
The, the, the seminary property?
Correct.
Yes, there's going to be commercial development coming in there, and that will line up when that development comes in.
So we're having that, we're thinking about that.
They, yeah, they will finish the, the signal.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for the Alterna Property.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Let me run the restroom real quick, sorry.
You know, I, I need to do that also. So while he's doing that, I'm going to do that. Thank you.
For the record, I don't have to do that.
Can we at least, on the record, state that the meeting is currently in recess?
Currently in recess, be back in five.
I was just kidding about, on the record, please. Don't put that in the minutes. I wouldn't worry about...
Are we ready? Are we ready? Rob, we ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Call it back to order. Next up, it's the ordinance number 2988, second reading, establishing and regulating those noise standards presented by Michael Rodriguez.
Ordinance number 2988. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka by amending Chapter 38, Environment, by creating Article 4, Noise, to regulate noise standards within the City of Apopka, by amending Part 3, Land Development Code, Article 5, Development Standards, Section 5.16, Miscellaneous Standards, by deleting subsection 5.16.1, Noise Standards, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
There are no changes to the, to the ordinance from first reading.
Okay. Any questions for Michael about the noise ordinance? Anybody from the public which should speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2988.
The only item of note, based off of the feedback from the public comment the last meeting, I don't know, for general discussion, but in 38-220, Section 38-220, Enforcement Penalty, Property Owner Responsibility, the section C2, in order to establish such fact, the owner of the property shall within 30 days after the date of the issuance of the notice of violation or civil citation. I didn't know if it was worthwhile to bump that to 45 days because it's not even a month worth of time. And I think the feedback from the, I think it was Mr. Beckett that had made the comment. If there's, if, if it's a property management, managed property, there may be kind of a lag period, so.
Lieutenant Brick.
Which exec, which, which section was that?
Page 151 of our packet.
What page?
151.
Okay.
You've got a question, I know, I know. Got a question about the ordinance and making, instead of 30 days, making it 45 days for the for enforcement. Everything else, we're consistently with 30 days though, right? Or what's?
No.
Is there anything else we've got more than 30 days?
No. We just, yeah, the 30 days is, is just to be consistent. You get a traffic ticket, you have 30 days to pay. You get, anything else that we do, it, it's, it's 30 days.
Consistency, yeah.
It's just the standard.
Right, and, and to note, it's not 30 days from the date of the violation. It would be 30 days from receipt. So this actually is consistent and almost identical to the state statute for red light cameras, in which there, there, the in that, or in that statute, the owner of the vehicle has 30 days to submit the affidavit. So the timelines are the same. I mean, I'm just giving you what the origins of the 30 days is. This is really emulating what is already in state statute in regards to notification. So, you know, if the violation occurs on, on day X, that doesn't, the 30-day clock doesn't start on day X. It starts on the date that the property owner receives the notice of violation. So now, at that point.
This says issuance, it doesn't say receipt.
Issuance of the notice.
Not receipt.
If the date of the notice, well, I mean, if, if you wanted, we can change it to receive, but it's the, if the violation is issued to the property owner, it's going to be issued subsequent to inability to, to be able to cite or to serve the person in control of the property. So the issuance can come at a later date. I mean, we're, we're looking at it, it's, I mean, if it's the, the whim of this board to move it up to 45 days from issuance, or, or change it to 30 days to receipt, at that point, I mean, we can ensure that, that the, these notices will be, sir, I think we do have, I'll double check, we, that, you know, usually our notice of violations, even in code enforcement, are issued through certified mail, return receipt requested. So we do have a copy of, of the date that it is. That it would be received and the clock would, would start at that point.
We would know, but even if we mail a uniformed traffic citation, okay, they still, they only have 30 days from the date of citation. And where the, this would come in, is a tenant refuses to come to the door because who's having a party and wants to talk to the cops? They know that they're, they're loud. And we have run into this situation recently where they don't want to answer the door. That's fine. We're going to do our noise measurements. We're going to fill out our paperwork, take multiple measurements, and then we're going to issue a violation and we're going to mail it in accordance with statute and ordinance. I think 30 days is a reasonable, is a reasonable amount of time for anybody to respond. And again, it, it's just being consistent, but, I mean.
I mean, I think 30 days is fine as long as we're specifying, I mean, what everyone agrees with of receipt. I think that's very key because to, what, the point that was made is, is if I have multiple rental properties and it's a management company or goes to my P O box, whatever it may be, there's just some lag time there that could be a problem and not provided enough time there. So if somebody has 15 different rental properties, it just, I, I'm okay with keeping with 30 days to make it consistent. But is, I would, I would prefer with this being brought up from being switched from issuance to the date of receipt.
Or, how do we prove, but i- if, okay, no good news comes by certified mail. So you don't prove if they don't, that's why I, I
Right, and also.
I had an issue with, with date of receipt because you can't, most people won't go pick up certified mail, a lot of people won't. And then now you, now you no longer can prove receipt. As long as we follow state statute in, like, when we post notices or, or we send, we make our, we do our due diligence in notifying, then I, I think that it, it's from a law enforcement standpoint for, that we stick with the date of issuance because date of receipt starts to get into.
And, and also under Florida law, Florida follows the mailbox rule. So once the item has been put in the mailbox to be sent, you're deemed that it has been delivered. So this skirts someone who's saying, well, I, I refuse, you know, technically, if they refuse certified mail, there is then it put into question whether it was received or not. As opposed to the, the notice, once the notice is put in the mail, you are deemed to have been served and has been deemed to be delivered. And that's the law in the state of Florida.
But I think that's the concerning part too, is that somebody that's honest and wants to take care of it is now being taken away 10 days, five days, three days, whatever it is for the mailing. And maybe it goes again to the property manager, whatever it may be. And then the property managers may not be on top of it, may not check their own P O box often, so. I mean, you understand that, that what we're saying or that what, what, you know, it, it doesn't give a fair opportunity for them to rebut it in some way or to pass it on to their tenant and say.
The, the amount of days is, is, I mean, it's, it's either we increase it 45 days from date of issuance. 30 days is deemed a reasonable timeframe. The state has deemed that to be a reasonable timeframe when it comes to issuance of citations for violation of red light cameras. So we are being consistent with the state. I think if you, if you want to extend the timeframe, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but we're going to have to keep it at date of issuance and not 45 days from date of receipt. At that point, it's the, it's the onus of the property owner. The property owner is ultimately, ultimately responsible and liable for the actions on, on their property. And providing a, providing the notice, giving them the 30 days. At that point, the city has met its procedural due process to the property owner. What the property owner does with that, that's, that falls on them.
I understand.
But we need the minimum due process requirements, providing them with 30 days to, giving them this outlet to be able to ensure to the rest of the residents of the City of Apopka that enforcement action is being taken and that the city is addressing noise concerns.
I, I understand what you're saying, I, I hear it for sure. But again, it goes back to being in the industry, day in, day out. I understand that property managers probably check their mail on the first and then to the fifth, and then they start issuing late notices to the tenants. So they're not checking the mail regularly, things like that, which, so they're not going to know when, as a property manager, they receive a notice, whether it's certified or not, maybe for the next month. So, I mean, it depends what everyone else, I, I, I do agree, this could become a very big issue. I understand that we're meeting what we need, our, our guidelines, and I.
Well, yeah, I mean, put it this way, I mean, we, I'm okay leaving the language as it is, but with the caveat that if this becomes problematic with some of the, because it's a unique situation, right? I mean, and I don't know what the volume is going to be, what the load, the velocity of these complaints, I have no idea. Don't have the curve ball, but just know that if, if it becomes, if those types of landlords come to us after the fact and say this is punitive to them and their operations, obviously, we would come back and seek maybe 45 days or.
It's, it's amendable, this isn't, this isn't etched in stone.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to do 45 days just because of the lack of consistency there. And if you guys are having an issue with being receipt, yeah, let's just have the understanding that this may be adjusted in the near future.
Okay. All right. Anybody from the public which should speak on this one?
Throw the curve ball at you now. So Todd Banksen, 4044 Stormway Court, Apopka. A lady up in the front, an old lady, that couldn't come, she can't get out, asked me to ask this question. Has to do with fireworks. Does that fall into it? Because she was extremely upset, like, I wasn't here for New Year's Eve, but she said it was bad. Me, they're, well, they're not illegal, but obviously the mortars are. And it went on and on, and she said, I should be able to call for that, right? I said, ma'am, I don't know, but I'll throw that out there so they can think about it. So you might, if.
Michael, if you get that call.
Here, here's the gray area with this. So they may fall under that, the, what is kind of the equivalent of that. It's not necessarily a noise, the consistent noise, but those impactful noises, those, right now, I can't remember the term. But on the flip side, the state legislature last year legalized fireworks on the sale and use of fireworks on 4th of July, New Year's Eve, and I wish I can remember what the other.
Was it New Year's Day?
Holiday.
I thought, I thought it was New Year's Eve and day.
New Year's Eve, New Year's, yeah, because it floats through the days, but so it's going to fall in the, in the, in the, kind of that gray area. Plus the, the, I mean, in theory, if it, it reaches that impulsive sound, similar to a jackhammer construction. I know the question is going to be then, and that's going to defer to the chief of police, is the enforcement, you're going to have to actually try to track down where those fireworks came from. And in theory, if you find someone who's four blocks down the road is issuing fire, is submitting, you know, launching fireworks, someone else five, five, you know, another mile down the road, you have multiple fireworks, who is the offending party? It's, it's a difficult one. That's kind of a gray area that unfortunately, I think because of the infernal wisdom of our state legislature, we're kind of stuck with two days, three days where residents are going to have to tolerate fireworks when they're not permissible to be sold or launched on other days of the year.
I also think there's an ag exemption too.
There is an ag exemption for the use of fireworks for agricultural, which was the old loophole that people used to use to buy illegal, well, illegal, quote unquote, illegal fireworks in the state of Florida by simply filling out a form saying, I'm using these for agricultural uses, even though you live in a large city in the middle of the city.
Well, you can come up and give us a comment on, or.
Hi, my first name Brenda Barfield. In regards to the noise that occurred on the eve of the night, December 31st, I've been in my home for 24 years, and I just want to know legally, what is the statute of decibels? Because this was an unusual situation. It was literally like a war zone. And I thought maybe they were doing night training at the fire station out, I mean, the place, the shooting range. But it was, it was really unusual. It wasn't the just commercial fireworks. There was a lot of gun shooting, and it was really unusual. I was kind of afraid and, I mean, again, 24 years, and we've had people to celebrate. We've been there, my kids are all grown and gone. But this year was extremely unusual. And the decibel of noise, you know, that was really alarming. I couldn't go to sleep prior to that, years before, no problem, it was lightweight. But what is the decibel? Is there a certain amount or sound?
It's, the code provides that for time averaged sound. So that would be music or other things that. Well, no, no, time average is something where you're on the property, you have a noise meter and you're measuring out the size. So that, examples of that are loud music, other types of ambient noises. From 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., the receiving property, the sound level limit is 60 decibels.
I'm particular, I'm talking about fireworks.
Fire, and this is where we fall again in that gray area. So fireworks would technically fall under impulsive. From 10:01 p.m. to 6:59 a.m., they're not allowed. But now we've got a state statute that permits folks to have fireworks on those three specific dates. And the intent is, you're New Year's Eve to New Year's Day, the intent is you're launching. And 4th of July, you're launching your fire, I mean, in theory, yes, after 10:00 p.m. on the 4th of July, you may be able to call whether or not in proper enforcement. Firearms and gunshots, that's another gray area because local governments are prohibited from enforcing anything relating to firearms, except for if there's an, then you're, you're looking at trying to discover, find who is the unlawfully discharging a firearm. You know, there are other avenues to, to address those issues. But fireworks, we, unfortunately, because of those three days in the state, in the state statute, we fall into that gray area as to how far can we push enforcement of noise when it comes to fireworks. I mean, if, I, I wouldn't advise, I would, I would not advise law enforcement to not try to enforce if, if a offender can be readily identified and given a, a proper warning. There just may be, the realities are, they, there may be difficulties in, in prosecuting an, an offense of that nature.
But, and to that point, because to go back on the fireworks, I mean, this turned into a four or five-day occurrence, right? So in short, in, in short term, there's a table within Section 38-215, talks about the impulsive. An impulsive is defined, one of which is explosives. So of course fireworks are going to be deemed as explosive. Anytime after 10 o'clock until 7 o'clock in the morning are, says not allowed, period, end of sentence. So to the attorney's point, yeah, state preemption may kind of tie our hands in terms of July 4th, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, because it is New Year's Day. But all those other dates, it should be enforceable.
Right, and it's enforceable.
Hey, you can't do these after 10 o'clock.
Right, no, and, and as I said, I wouldn't tell law enforcement not to proceed. I'm, I'm just kind of putting it all out there that there may be difficulties in prosecuting. It, yeah, I'm not going to sugarcoat and say, we're going to catch everybody and everyone's going to be prosecuted. We will proceed forward to prosecution, just being aware that there may be difficulties in prosecution because of usually, if it's easy, if, if one property is readily identifiable, it's going to make prosecution easier. Usually it's more than one. I heard it before the, before New Year's, I can hear multiple properties discharging. The question is then becoming, you know, can we readily identify the, the proper offending, offending property at that point? It's, that's just, I'm, I'm just giving the practical effect when it comes, when it relates to fireworks. But I'm not saying it's not, it's not unenforceable.
But if they're setting them off other than those three days, it's illegal anyway, correct?
Correct, then you're looking at a potential state violation if they're not being used for agriculture, a state statute violation if they're not being used for agricultural purposes.
They could be scaring birds. Herding cattle. Whatever it may be.
Okay.
And this, and one last question. This is, is this similar to code enforcement in that there has to be an actual name associated with a?
Complaint.
Correct. Yeah, is that happening? Or is it can be an anonymous submission?
No, well, because it is going through the code enforcement, I mean, the state has prohibited any anonymous court tips. There, it's, it's, that is something that we're, we're prohibited to by the state. Also, because the, on a noise ordinance, because you're dealing with the receiving property, the, the citation is going to cite, oh, this is the property that's being, that's receiving the noise at this address. So any prosecution of the matter, the state, the officer is going to state, on this date, I was at this address and, and made measurements of the, of the noise, so.
Got you.
Okay. Okay. All right. Got everybody taken care of. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance.
We got one, one more last comment here.
Sylvester Hall, 391 Roland Hills Lane. Again, I agree with the noise, having a, some type of ordinance for the noise, period. I agree with that 100%. But I want it enforced consistently. Not we pick and choose who we want to prosecute. It's got to be a way to oversee it and make sure it's been administered consistently. Not we're going to pick and choose who we want to prosecute, prosecute, when we want to prosecute. So if we can find a way to make sure that don't happen, I'm all for the noise ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Bring it back. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2988.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2980.
Ordinance number 2980. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city very low density suburban residential for a certain real property generally located north of West Poncan Road and west of Phil's Lane, owned by Philip and Patricia Simmons, comprising 9.95 acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Roxanne?
This is Roxanne Reed with the city. This project is to ask for a future land use amendment from county rural to city very low density suburban residential. This location is 35, 3405 West Poncan Road, and the tract size is 9.95 acres. The vicinity here, you can see. And this is the existing future land use of rural and then the proposed future land use. As you can see from this map, that it is compatible with the area next to it, to the west, that has the same future land use designation. The Development Review Committee recommended approval, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, and the recommended motion is to accept this first reading and hold it over for a second reading and adoption on January 18th. The applicant and I are here if you have any questions.
Any questions for Roxanne?
These are going to be, just to, because we've, I know we've seen this before, it's going to be custom homes, correct? Or, it's not going to be like a D.R. Horton or a major builder, it's individual lots basically that can be purchased?
I can have the applicant answer that.
Thank you.
Brian Solis is here with LPG. Yes, they are going to be custom homes, they're each going to sell each individual lot.
Okay.
And the owners are going to live in two of the lots on the 19, out of the 19.
Got you. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number.
I would just like to clarify something, Albert McKee, McKeeby 3603 Golden Gem Road. Is the applicant saying that at no stage, D.R. Horton will be involved in the sales of any houses on this property?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
He wants to know if D.R. Horton is going to be building the homes.
Ryan Solstice, LPG. We are in talks with D.R. Horton for the purchase of part of their pond in, to get a 20th unit onsite because we are 0.05 acres short of that threshold, which is the maximum density of two dwelling units per acre. At first, we assumed that we would be able to get that 20th. So we are in talks with them. They did, the property owner adjacent to us sold it to D.R. Horton and they just closed at the end of December. So we're in talks with them, but as far as D.R. Horton building homes, that is not the current status.
So it won't be?
It'd be somebody coming in doing their own custom builder or something.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2980 at first reading and hold over for second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2981.
Ordinance number 2981. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from county A1 citrus rural to city RSF1B residential, single family large lot for certain real property generally located north of West Poncan Road and west of Phil's Lane. Owned by Philip and Patricia Simmons, comprising 9.95 acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
This is Roxanne Reed with the city. This is the companion rezoning to the case that was just heard, asking for a zoning change from county A1 to city RSF1B. And this is the same vicinity as you can see here and the existing zoning of A1 and the proposed zoning is RSF1B, which is compatible with the property to the west. The Development Review Committee recommended approval, the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval, and the recommended motion is to accept the first reading of this ordinance and hold it over for a second reading and adoption on January 18th.
Okay. Any questions for Roxanne? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will oppose the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2981 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2982.
Ordinance number 2982. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T transitional to IL light industrial for certain real property generally located west of Conrad, Conrad Road and south of Hog's Head Road. Owned by Timothy Lee Strickland Revocable Trust, comprising 20.7 acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Roxanne?
Roxanne Reed again with the city of Apopka. This is a change of zoning from transition to light industrial. The location is 310 Conrad Road and the size of the property is 20.7 acres. You can see the vicinity here on Conrad Road and the existing zoning of transition and the proposed zoning of industrial light, which is compatible with the zoning in the area. The DRC Committee has recommended approval, the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval, and the recommended motion is to accept this first reading of the ordinance and hold it over for a second reading and adoption on January 18th. The applicant and I are available for questions.
Any questions for Roxanne?
What's the plans for this one?
The plans? Some type of industrial development is what we were informed of at the Planning Commission meeting.
Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
Alex Mazdak with, representing the applicant. We are currently evaluating various options for site plans for the property. Do not have an existing site plan per se yet, but whatever would be decided upon would be obviously subject to setback requirements and any environmental requirements that would need to be met.
Is this going to be like owner user or tenant occupied or what's that look like?
It could be a bill to suit if a particular tenant or multiple tenants are secured.
Okay.
Or it could be that it's an owner user.
So just no set plans, but industrial in some capacity?
Correct. Consistent with what's already there or slated to be there or already under construction.
I know you guys got a big, well, not you specifically, there's a big development coming in right next to the east of you guys. That's industrial as well, so. And then do you have or know of, there's no wetlands on this, right?
Yeah, I was going to ask. There's a small impact on the wetlands that relate to the west.
Okay.
To the extent, you know, we would deal with those through the water management district as, as required.
And that's, that's like a mitigation process, correct?
I don't know that we would even impact them.
Really?
Frankly, I think we would just fence that off.
Got you.
That's tentative and to the extent we would impact, then we would go through the mitigation process to the extent it's also available.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2982 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2983.
Ordinance number 2983. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from MUT mixed use transition to KPI MUVC Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use Village Center for certain real property generally located north of Kelly Park Road and west of Effie Drive. Owned by Ward Family Partners LLP, comprising 17.6 acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Roxanne Reed with the city. This is a change of zoning from mixed use transition to Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use at 3951 West Kelly Park Road and the acreage is 17.6 acres. You can see the vicinity map here and then the existing zoning is mixed use transition. And this proposed zoning is just for the southern part of this parcel, as you can see, marked off here in the yellow, asking for the transition to Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use with the Village Center assignment for that southern portion. This is the concept sketch of what they plan to do on that southern portion and then this is the master plan that was submitted. The Development Review Committee did recommend approval, the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval, and the recommended motion here is to accept the first reading and hold it over for a second reading and adoption on January 18th. The applicant and I are here for questions.
Any questions for Roxanne?
You skimmed over that concept plan pretty quickly. It's not in our packet.
I'm going to go back to see that.
Really, the only business that we're doing right here is changing the zoning.
Right, right. It's just changing the zoning to the Kelly Park Interchange zoning.
So the... So this will line up with Golden Gem, but the property to the west, basically if Golden Gem kept going straight, what they're calling Main Street, that's not the property we're talking about. So is this being joined with another project?
This particular zoning is just for this part you see highlighted here in red. This is what they want this to change the zoning to the, let me get back to it here.
And my apologies, this particular one's not in our packet. We have another one.
Right.
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
Just to clarify.
All right.
But it's, it looks a little different.
Yeah, this is the Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, but then they want the Village Center assignment for this southern part.
Which I assume just for higher density, correct?
Right, right.
So what we have in our packet is obviously different than what is being presented now, which I understand, that's not what we're proving, it just, I'm trying to understand the project in its totality, that is this going to be a part of the one to the west as well?
And I'm going to let the applicant address that because he knows exactly what he's doing.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Tony Binge, I'm President of Binge Development, 609 East Pine Street, Orlando, Florida, 3203. Correct. What we're looking at doing right now is this southern portion would be, the southern portion of the property-
No, no, I'm saying there might be a clicker there if you want to.
It was, it was on.
Do we have a, are you talking about? Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Oh, pointer, okay.
Pointer, I'm sorry, pointer.
Ah, there we go.
Oh, perfect. Even easier. Top star, just image your picture.
Ah, perfect.
Okay.
Okay. So what we're looking at right now is, Golden Gem is right here, so this would roughly be the parcel, the 17 acres here. This would be part of one parcel that would be married with several others along Kelly Park Road for a more commercial development. So what we're doing at this point is just wanting to assign the proper zoning that will allow more of a town use, commercial density. We're not yet at the stage we know exactly where the layouts for the buildings will be. Obviously, we're in discussions with multiple tenants at this time, getting their footprints, everything else. So this is just in our early stage, we're setting the table for what will be a commercial setting along Kelly Park.
Are you the developer of the one to the west as well or is that, are you partnering with?
There's affiliations for-
Okay, I understand. An LP or something along those lines. And then maybe, I don't know, if you can speak to it or Pam, sorry to ask, is there, I guess, can we just speak directly to what the, the plans are for the road there, things like that, just to get a little more comfort on Kelly Park and?
Absolutely. In fact, let me give the commissioner here a little bit of history of what's been going on for, I would say at least the past six to nine months is, there's a group of major landowners in this corridor that have been working with a group of engineers at Kimble Horn to do a master transportation analysis of what's needed. Because not only do, we need to figure out what is going to go there, but also how it will impact our developments. Because we, obviously, the last thing we want to do is spend an incredibly large amount of money on a project and not be able to get people to and from it efficiently. So we started that process, one of the first things that was very unusual about having this many people working together is how well everyone has been working together. I can't think of one time any of the landowners have been obstinate or not playing along. Your staff has done an excellent job of laying out very clear goals that there will be no offset roads, you've got to put the right roads in the right places, how they'll be built, how they'll be timed, all of that. You have the entire group within Kelly Park of the major landowners and they're working well together and it's helping because it's producing an efficiency of that when all of this hits, we need to have, to make sure that the master infrastructure is in place. That is a daunting level. When you add up everything that's going to be coming here, it's huge. I, I cannot commend your staff enough. They have done a very careful and thoughtful analysis and they've also made it very clear to everybody coming into this Kelly Park Interchange, what the expectations are so that we don't run into these issues later. So I think for one time, I will say, in probably the last 10 years, this has probably been the best example of staff coming together through the use of private engineers and the various developers to make sure that this is a well thought out, well planned, well executed prescription of how to get these road improvements done, not only completed, but get them completed timely and in a manner that will allow for the maximum use of the property for everyone. So while it's very tough to explain to people as development comes in, you've got a myriad of disparate interests working on that. For instance, right now, I mean, you've got probably no less than a dozen very high-profile retailers that all have their demands and wants of positioning, access, sign it, I mean, you name it, it's all in there. You further complicate it with bringing in a large residential component intertwined with this. So now you've got almost a PhD level of master plan that needs to take place. What, again, I cannot stress enough, has been going on consistently now for many months is all the players are coming together to realize what has to be done as far as road dedications, everything else to lay the table for that. And that's what your staff has spent a lot of time doing so that we're not going to get far enough down the road that suddenly it's an issue. As a silly example, one of the things that come up with always schools. Well, one of the problems we have as developers with Orange County is they wait till a school's completely overcrowded before they'll even talk about doing a relief to it. Well, by the time you already know there's a problem and now you've got to go identify a replacement site, go through all that process, by the time you actually get that in place, you're going to, it's going to cost you three times as much, it's going to have already caused a major issue with that. And it's just, it's that reactionary problem with development. This is the antithesis of that. Here, you've got everybody laying out those potential landmines early on and saying, let's make sure we avoid any of these. We don't want to be coming here a year from now, two years from now, when suddenly a small change on a piece of paper, now it's, it's the cost of the change of the paper and the engineer's time. You start having to move major road transportation networks, ponds or buildings, it'd be catastrophically bad. So there has been an immense level of effort to make sure that this is laid out in a way and really everyone has worked well together. I, I can think of at least half a dozen times that property owners have had to contact each other and, you know, whether they may be a third or fourth phase, get a road extended, knowing how can we get this done early? Will you work with us on that? And everyone has been very, very cooperative and it really stems back from, you've had staff and Pam in particular, has really done a good job of laying out the expectations of what needs to be done so that this development can be done timely, but it also can be done in a way that shows what good forward planning can lead to versus being reactionary and letting everybody just come in piecemeal and do what they want. It's been the opposite here. And I think that's one of the things I would really encourage, that if the individual commissioners would like to get a better sense of that, I'm, I'm more than happy to meet with any of you one-on-one and kind of bring it to speed on everything going on within this. But it's also going to need, we are going to need the commission's help dealing with Orange County. Orange County right now has a, has an attitude of, well, we're in control of a lot of things, but we'll get back with you. Apopka is far more responsive. I mean, look at one of the earlier, something came up today about Golden Gem, the vast majority of Golden Gem is in Orange County, right? Where are they?
Are you able to speak, and, and I appreciate you giving us that level of detail and I, I think most of us are always interested in, in meeting with developers just to hear the full plan to give us a better comfort level, so I'm always open to that for sure. Are you able to give any type of timelines or, or details into Kelly Park and, and Golden Gem and what that looks like?
It's coming quickly.
Okay.
And I'm going to warn everybody, it's going to happen quicker than you think it will.
What's quick?
I think in 2023, you're going to see a lot of development activity in the ground. Right now, what you're not seeing is a lot of the permitting, a lot of the processing like this is going on behind the scenes, whereas to come in now, you'll actually start seeing the bulldozers come in, you'll see things done. You've got, right now, I know of at least three key retailers that will be here in the next 60 days and we'll get a very good indication of which ones are coming. Once that starts, it's kind of like the dam breaks. Once a couple of the anchors hit, all the lemmings follow along. And so it's, it's, 2023 will be the year you'll see a lot of activity physically going on within that area.
Understood.
Let me just add.
Sure. Get closer to mine.
I'm sorry. Kelly Park Road and the signals on Kelly Park Road are all under design right now. And I would, I would imagine that's going to take a year to get all that completed. And while that's going on and Tony brings in his project and the, the large project to the south, I call it the Rochelle Holdings piece because I can't remember the name of it, and the Galvin piece, they are designing big components of roads to north-south roads, east-west roads. Tony's project will design the extension north of Golden Gem. The Rochelle Holdings piece will design the extension of Sadler and Effie Road on the south side and then whatever it is that's coming into the east of that, that I can't remember the name of, they will be making design enhancements to Effie. And then we've collectively agreed where there are going to be two east-west roads, which will be installed with the development. So, because these roads are all embedded in the development and we collectively as a group have already laid them out, they know that when they come in and make their development successful, I'll go back to the Rochelle Holdings piece, they can't work without Effie Road being extended to the south and they can't work without Sadler Road being put in. That is their responsibility and, and they must do that. So when they're going forward with their development and based on my emails and my phone blowing up, they want to go as soon as possible. You know, a year, whenever you see them start doing their development, one of the first things you'll see are those pieces of infrastructure.
And I think, I mean, you guys have heard it and noticed it, there, there's plenty of people that are concerned about that, the safety of that and, and seeing, the quicker we see those improvements, the better for everybody.
We're, we're, we're memorializing all this in a area-wide master plan and a pioneering agreement that all these developers are signing on to. That's how we're going to ensure that it gets done. They've, they've all agreed to it, we've had two or three meetings. There is a hierarchy of what needs to get done. They build the things on their site, but we, the city, then are left with roads like Kelly Park Road that needs to be widened. They all have a vested stake in that, we can't piecemeal it, it has to be one thing. So there's a, a process that we've agreed to and, and how it's going to get all paid for and a timeline. And you'll be seeing that, it's just not ready by this second, but it doesn't mean it doesn't exist.
And what it does sound like too, and, and you referenced this, is that Orange County needs to get involved in a, a much higher capacity as well to partner with us and, and make sure we just have a little more open- to partner with us and make sure we just have a little more open dialogue, not saying that we don't. But there's a disconnect somewhere, and we need to fix it moving forward. So I'm not saying it's us, not saying it's them, it's everybody. Communication is key on both sides. So I appreciate all the detail. Thank you.
And just, just wanted to follow up on that. And one of the things with Orange County too is they've had a large turnover of key employees toward the end of the year. They had a lot of retirements and everything else, which is probably leading to some of the, the disconnect. But I would urge the commission and perhaps a workshop or whatever would be the best thing for that is you're going to get a lot of questions from residents about the development process, how it goes, why certain things aren't done. There's always a natural order to the way things are done, and there's very compelling reasons of why they're done that way. And I think that might be very helpful for the commission just to almost have like a update of the area so you can kind of see some of the key transportation nodes, utility capacity. Make sure that all the concurrency items are there. One thing is obviously, Orange County is going to play a big role, and it's the schools. You're going to have a lot of rooftops coming in and out here. What, what are the plans for this? Where, what are we being ready? We also have studies that have been done that show the significant growth that is anticipated from this from third-party experts who model the kind of growth activity they see. We'll be happy to share those reports as well. But these are the kind of things that you want to be proactive and get ahead with that. And I think the one thing that we as the development community could do is offer at least up our insights as to why things are done a certain way. So at least it can kind of fill in a little bit of the history. So if a resident comes in and it's a very understandable thing that they see all this activity going, well, why aren't the roads built the first day? Well, there's obviously a lot of reasons such as utilities need to go in underground first. So you've got to get those in before any of the roads go in kind of on your way out with that. You also will damage them a lot of times by bringing in heavy concrete trucks, truss trucks, building panels, if it's the tilt wall, the extreme weight on that can also damage a lot of the stuff. So there's a normal process that it goes through. I think the more we can get those kind of informational things out to everybody will give every collective aha. Now I understand what I can expect to see over the next coming year, two, three, and four years out.
I think that'd be, I mean, I love workshops. So that would be really beneficial for kind of just having a KPI overall workshop just to update everyone. There's a lot of new residents, to your point, and to make sure that everyone can either express how they feel and then also to kind of understand the process a little bit better, including myself.
And I'm happy to meet with any of you one-on-one too, if you have any questions or anything we can help answer as well. So always happy to help.
Appreciate the info.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I'm good.
Good. Mr. Baker?
No, I mean, do you want us to coordinate through Pam for that meeting? Because I would like to take you up on the offer. Okay. Because, I mean, you know, Pam and I talked spiritedly about this on Tuesday night. You know, the plan and pioneering agreement, I think, are words that we'll repeatedly say here. Because again, in all fairness to the people in this room, gentlemen in the back with this hand up right now, we, we just, as a council, even if we are educated on the development process, we still need to have something to point to members of our public that do have those questions to say, here's exactly what we are planning to do. And so that's the conversation that Pam and I had, general head nodding agreements. Now, I want that timeline very accelerated because the gentleman to your right will probably talk here, they need assurances that we have this under control.
Absolutely. I think that's where it'll be very helpful. Because again, once they see what's been done, the order of things going in, one of the nuances we have to be careful with is as everyone is procuring their tenants or, or deals, a lot of that's kind of the poker game that developers will play with each other, who has this tenant, that tenant coming in. But things such as the overall master infrastructure plan, I think, could easily be disseminated out with reasonable timing windows on that. I mean, obviously with construction, you know, things will never be as exact as on this exact date you'll get that. But, you know, a general timeline of what will occur when, but more so is the why. That's what really lets people understand there's a rationale of this. It isn't, we just like to make things more difficult for people, but there's, you know, the reasons for the process. Thank you.
Commissioner Blaskas?
I want to take him up on the suggestion that, you know, they would bring us up to date regarding the Kelly Park interchange. I'm kind of on the same page as, as Commissioner Nestor. Rather than doing it individually with each of us, because that's a time-consuming. And then when we go back to kind of give the information, it may come out differently from each of us. But a workshop that would allow the public to come in and hear it just as well, and, and we all hear the same information at the same time, I would, I would be on board for a workshop.
All right. Thank you. All right. Public comment?
Okay, looking at the master plan, I understand we're only looking at a small subsection of the master plan today. And surprisingly enough, I'm not going to talk against it. I am concerned about one thing. A few weeks ago, on public record, Jim Hitt, your planning and zoning gentleman, told us that there were a maximum number of houses per year between five and 600 years project, between five and 600 homes per annum projected. Having a look at this master plan, I have to call into question, in its totality, exactly many house, how, how many houses are going to be put on there? It looks to me like it's a potential development for, for maybe 1,000 homes. Am I incorrect? Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, how can Mr. Hitt tell us he has a maximum of 500 or 600 homes per year over in the next five years? And we're speaking about another 2,000 homes in this development alone? Am I being lied to? Am I being made a fool of? Because 2,000 homes is going to be far more than what he said his projected figures of 500 or 600 homes per annum were.
Yeah. And not to speak for Mr. Hitt, how I would interpret that. And, and I think this year it was close to 700, maybe? But are we talking certificates of occupancy or approvals? Maybe you want to clarify that, the numbers. Because when I say 500 or 600 homes, I'm thinking that's what our factory capacity is in terms of churning out certificates of occupancy. But I'm not sure if you have a different point of view on that.
Sorry, Jim Hitt, Community Development Director. You're right, Commissioner, there's this area itself is designated for approximately 8,000 homes total in the KPI. That's what the KPI was outlined for. I just tallied the numbers, I believe it was Monday, with the number of COs for single-family homes, and it was 382 last year.
382?
382.
For all of 2022?
For, for all of 2022. Correct. It was actually down a little bit from the year before. 2021 was right. That's all of Apopka, correct. Townhomes, we had 96. And then I've got non, non-residential and regular COs.
That 96 is additive to the first number that you gave?
Correct. Yeah.
How many multifamily did we do?
That's, that's, that is just the townhomes. We didn't have any multifamily COs last year. Year before that, we did. I don't have the, I don't have the 2021.
Because we should have a lot in 2023, correct?
I'm sorry?
We should have quite a few multifamily.
Yes, we were going to have about, I believe it's four multifamilies coming online in 2023. They were, they were doing a lot of groundwork, a lot of vertical starts in 2022, you're correct.
But, I mean, when we say, I mean, what, what's the capacity? Like, what's our ceiling? Like, how many COs could we churn out with your current staff that you have right now within the four walls of City Hall?
Well, it's, it's.
If you do 1,000, people are going to be dropping, keeling over, you know, stressed out.
Yes, sir.
Am I, I'm, I'm saying that kiddingly, but like, is that the max? I mean, what's the max level that if we didn't staff up or if we didn't have any contractor help address these things, what's our max capacity?
I couldn't tell you exactly what that would be. We are looking at hiring another inspector because of the influx of the multifamily that's coming online, though. Right now, we're, we're holding it. We've got a few inspectors that have different, different traits, different certifications that can do certain things. The regular residential is one of the easier ones to get. And then there's the electrical and plumbing and mechanical. Those are the ones that are a little bit harder to get. But and some of that is, is more specific to certain types of jobs.
But, but historically speaking, we've come nowhere close to even doing like 700 or 800.
No.
A year.
No.
Nowhere even close.
No.
So if you had to get to that, if you were to even remotely try to get to that number, you would have to staff up or increase staff like you're talking about?
Correct.
But I think that's, there may be a small disconnect here, only in that I think Mr. McKimmy is talking about actual living units, whether it's single-family home, townhomes, or, or otherwise. So I think if we add it all together, it's, it's going to be a lot in 2023, but 2022, not so much. So it's.
But yeah, I, I think, I agree, the backlog is significant, and the backlog continues to grow. I think that's the point of contention on a lot of these discussions. The, the, the kind of, the governing, governing effect or the governor on that is our capacity. You know, we've got finite capacity in our factory, right? Factory being building department and within City Hall. And then two, the number of housing starts are declining going into 2023. And so market forces will dictate that number as well. So agreed, we've got a lot in the backlog. If that turns over, if developers continue to want to build that product, yeah, there's going to be, and I'm sure a lot of these developers are going to be knocking on our doors to say, hey, staff up so we can get in front of, get in front of this thing.
And that's exactly what we're looking at doing. One of the things, you know, we were mentioning doing a workshop on the KPI area. I've already started a map that will outline what developments have been approved, how many units there are for that, because it's, it's valuable. If we, if we've got a cap of around 80, a little over 8,000 units, I, we're already sitting, I did a rough estimate, we're at about 3,500 right now. And that's with all the ones that we've been doing so far.
That's the backlog.
Yes, sir.
And we don't current, do we have, not only is your department understaffed a little bit right now and overburdened, do we have the building fire inspector, didn't, weren't we hiring a position for that? Do we have that?
That I, I, I don't.
And that may not be a you question.
Sorry, can't, I'll have to answer that, but I can't.
So I don't know if we have that, because that, I mean, that's part of the process as well that delays things. So I don't know.
We, we have one, we just, we made a switch.
Switching roles. Were we hiring a second one, though? It was always just the one?
Just one.
Okay.
All right. Just, we just have the.
Yeah, this year, currently this year, um, the budget is one, but with growth, just like Jim said, we're, you know, we're planning on, as we're going to need.
Ask him for another. But we didn't, we didn't fund one this year? A second, I mean, more so an additional one we didn't fund?
No, we just realigned positions.
Do we have the position already?
I'm sorry?
Do we have the position already? And we just switched people out, or is it a new position that we filled?
No, we had, yeah, we switched people around, and we have a fully dedicated inspector now.
And we didn't have one before? They were sharing roles?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Yeah, I, sorry, I had to remind myself.
And one of the things we might, we'll look at is not only having the, the fire inspector maybe be a multi-discipline inspector as well, so they can do, maybe you can do some other things while you're out there. So one of the things we're going, we're going to look at is a.
That'd be, that'd be a lot.
One of the things that, that City Attorney just reminded me of is that we, we have had a couple of the builders that actually, according to Florida statutes, they can actually hire their own inspectors, their certified inspectors, do their own inspections. And some of these larger apartment complexes, that's, they have done that already before. And that, and then that saves us having to hire our own personnel because.
Are we allowed to require that? That the developers have to do that?
They, they, we, we suggested two of them, and a couple of them have done that. Toll Brothers came to me about doing that, you know, to help with our, their backlog. We, we still have ultimate approval.
Yeah, sure.
In other words, we, we actually do go out there and verify a couple of inspections just to, just to make sure they're on board. And they've done a good, they've actually done a very good job. They, they do that for other communities quite often.
Okay.
So when you have these multi-dwellings and you do these fire inspections, I mean, initially, you know, yeah, they're passed, but then isn't it required, like every year they get, the multi-dwelling gets a fire inspection? How does that work?
Yes, I got to nod yes.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
Can I complete what I was?
Okay.
Yes.
There seems to be a little bit of a disconnect here. My question isn't how many we can manage to put through a year, it's how many we desire to put through a year. This gentleman told us today that they would like to expedite 8,000 homes faster than we might believe it's possible to do. We also know that directly across the road from there, there's another development with a shopping mall and 3,000 homes. That's 8,000 and 3,000, that's 11,000 homes. It's only a few weeks ago that you were telling me the maximum was going to be 600 a year. Now, we're speaking in a cycle of five years, 11,000 homes. That's well over 2,000 a year. How many homes are we actually deciding that we're going to build over a five-year period? Your road structure plan goes back to, what's it, 2008? We haven't got a comprehensive road structure plan just now. And yet we're speaking about building 11,000 new homes and expediting them. It's not if we're capable of building them, it's do we want to build them?
Again, I, I'm just using past trend as a guide. Trend would say over the last 10 years, we've, our factory output of COs is around 500, give or take. That's, I'm not saying, I have no opinion on whether or not that's our desired state. I would lean on staff to say, okay, 500 is our sweet spot based off our current staff, based off of our ability to plan properly for public safety, public services, fleet facilities to support growth. If we go up 100 homes, 200 homes, 300, if we get to 1,000 per year, okay, that's outside of the norm, that's going to create stress. Do we feel like there's planning deficiencies or deficiencies in general that we need to consider as a council? That's what I would rely on staff. To your point, I would rely, rely on staff to provide that level of insight to say, we need to pump the brakes or, hey, we're, we're able to get more through the funnel, here's what the result of that will be. There's going to be additional spend, additional staffing required, et cetera. But I, when I'm saying, when I say 500 or 600, it's just, what does our trend look like over the past 10 years? And that's, from my understanding, that's what it's been. And so what that tells me, if we've been able, some could argue the point, right? If we've been able to properly staff, knowing that annual churn rate, one would say, okay, we're on a good path. But again, I need staff to tell us up or down whether or not that is valid thinking.
All right.
But to say, I mean, I would argue the point that I would be shocked if there's 11,000 dwelling units that are online within a five-year period in that particular area. Again, I'm looking for a confirmation or discredit of that. Because I'm up here thinking, I don't think that will be anywhere close to 11,000 dwelling units within that area within a five-year period. Is that safe to assume?
The, the 8,000 is the maximum for the KPI area. The other, the other apartments, there's a few other apartment complexes off of Vineyard Road and then also off of Olapopka Boulevard. So those are, those are the main areas that we've got right now is, you know, for the, for the apartment portions. I would expect that the single-family will probably end, but end up being a little lower than that 382 that was last year. That's, that was a little less than the year before. 2021 was our, was our, I guess, what I would term our peak year.
And in all fairness to Mr. McKimmy, who's sitting there, and I don't know if it's larger text on the concept plan that we're looking at, but everything that's with a pink rooftop in that picture is commercial on this particular concept plan. So the majority of what you're looking at there is commercial, not dwelling units. I think what Mr. Benj was referring to before, maybe in the multifamily, was on the piece of parcel that's north of this property, but not part of the business on this particular zoning change. And again, is that a correct statement?
I, we, we haven't, we haven't fully reviewed the master plan for, for compliance and how many units are.
What we're looking at right now, from a concept perspective, all of the buildings in red are commercial.
Are commercial.
Concept.
Yes.
And this is just the lower portion of that yellow bordered area that we saw before, that my assumption is the, the upper section, upper section is going to be start to, you know, touching transition zones or neighborhood zones.
Correct.
Kelly Park interchange.
Less density as you go north.
Right, more residential. But in this particular piece of business, what we're contemplating right now, based on this concept, what, the majority of what we're looking at here is commercial.
Correct. Correct.
Sylvester?
Yes, as a concerned citizen, I'm trying to follow along with everything that's transpiring here. And when I look at some of the issues that are brought up, if some of the residents didn't bring up those issues, those things wouldn't get addressed. And so none of us are resident expert on what we're reviewing here. And so, uh, none of us are resident expert on what we're reviewing here. So my suggestion is, um, would be, would it be outside of the question to have you guys to have a consultant when you're dealing with this? So all angles will be covered, you guys won't be blindsided, or you guys won't miss anything. Because if you're not skilled in this, in this particular area, what you're called to make a decision on, you can easily be blindsided.
We have one.
Well, if that's the case, then all these questions that these gentlemen are raising should have already been taken care of. And that's not the case. So just, just something to consider, Mayor.
Okay, anybody else from public wants to speak on this matter?
Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-nine eighty-three at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-two, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, providing for a budget amendment.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. At this time, I request council adoption of resolution number twenty-two, twenty twenty-three oh one, FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget amendment number seven, in the amount of twenty million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and one dollars and fifty-seven cents. The budget amendment consists of four items. The first item, Transportation Impact Fee Reserve Fund Amendment in the amount of nine hundred seventy-five thousand, eight ninety-seven. This is related to an agreement that was brought to you on November, I think, seventeenth, Transportation Impact Fee Credit Agreement between the City of Apopka, Arrow Rock, GE Apopka LLC, PMDW Ventures LLC, to upgrade and resurface King Street and Peterson Road. Number two is a sub-reception agreement that was approved tonight under the consent addenda for the CRA area. It's the sidewalk installation improvement project phase one. The grant is in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars from Orange County. The third item, we have some additional expenses that, and repair work that is necessary as a result of Hurricane Ian. We're estimating that cost to be about two hundred and forty thousand. We do plan to seek reimbursement from FEMA, FEMA for those repairs. The last item, number four, of course, is our largest item, we're closing out the fiscal year end. And at this time, we need to bring forward those dollars that related to projects that started in FY twenty-two, continuing into FY twenty-three, in the amount of eighteen million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Again, the total amount is twenty million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and two dollars, as rounded.
Okay, any questions for Blanche?
This may not be a question for you, maybe Edward. The FEMA funds, things like that, do we have like a total expenditure that we spent on cleanup, things like that? And you may not have that right now.
We don't have that right now, we will have that for you, Commissioner, and we will bring that to you. This, we're hoping this is our last budget amendment.
Okay.
To cover those costs and take care of those items. But as soon as we have that, we'll be able to bring that to you, because that's what we will apply to FEMA for reimbursement.
And what do those timelines look like?
If you recall, but think back, if you recall, we put a million dollars, we transferred a million from general fund reserves to grant fund, and now we're transferring another two hundred and forty. So roughly, we're sitting at about one point two today, roughly right now.
And what, for reimbursement for FEMA, just from your past experience, what does that timeline look like to be reimbursed?
It can be anywhere from two years to six years, seven years. I'm hoping, I'm hoping, bless, but we're going to do everything we can to the AM.
Right.
As soon as possible, but it can be two to six years.
Because when was Irma, when was the last?
Yeah, we still have some small pieces outstanding from Irma.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's what?
Three or four hundred thousand?
It's not millions, but it's still three or four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions? Anybody from public wants to speak on this matter?
Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
So moved.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, next, thank you. Next up, City Council reports, Commissioner Velasquez.
Well, um, first, Happy New Year to everyone. Uh, the only thing I, we didn't do too much over the holidays, but the only thing that I just want to make a comment about is that, you know, the last few city council meetings, actually, the last few months of city council meetings for public comment, we keep getting the same, uh, issues that, and concerns, and it regards to fire department. So I'd like to kind of have a goal in which we can bring some resolution to that. And, uh, and the safety committee, I'd like to see it working again to, to do the investigation. And, you know, I really want to start twenty twenty-three, uh, where we can come together, where we can work together, and that there be some transparency and that we can actually get to a point where we have a resolution. And I realize that the death of Austin Duran has really brought to the surface a lot that we have to fix and that we have to address. And I realize that we're not going to close the chapter as quickly as, as maybe some would like. But certainly, um, I, I have a concern that at every city council meeting, I feel like I'm getting the same message over and over again. And I'd like to see that come to some conclusion and that we have something that we can offer the family, that we can give to our firefighters, that we can give to our public, and most importantly, the families that, that are in the City of Apopka looking at us and saying, well, what is the commission doing? And how are we trying to resolve this? And, and how are we going to bring some closure to the family? They're never going to have closure. But what they're looking for is where's our compassion for them? And, uh, I'd like to see that happen in the next, you know, few council meetings, because I like to not have the family come every city council meeting. And I just feel a lot for them, they really want to be home and grieve, but they want to know that we are, that we are doing the right thing for them. And so let's make that our mission for the next few council meetings. Let's come together, bring us as much information that you can give us, so that we can feel like we are doing the right thing. And, um, you know, that's my, my hope for, as we open up this new year, is to kind of start addressing some of the things that are important, not just to us, but to the fire department and to our city taxpayers.
Mr. Becker?
I agree with that sentiment. I think I've talked enough during public comment on that topic, but fully agree. If we don't do anything, we're just going to sit here and sp- spin the wheels in terms of having the same dialogue every single meeting. And I don't think that that's healthy for any of the parties involved. Clearly, there's disconnect, there's no between the fire administration and the rank and file. And, I mean, I'm not making that up, I'm not trying to be a jerk, it's reality. And we've, we've got to do better. Anyways, you know, I don't see, no, I, uh, Mr. Hall made a point just a second ago. And I see public comment and, um, debate very healthy in this chamber. You know, if, and he's right, there, there's times where there's pieces of business where, um, we, we need to be held accountable in our decision-making process. And I see that as a value add, not, you know, Mr. McKimmy, come up here and challenge us, do it, it's appreciated. Same with Mr. Hall and, and everybody else that gets up here and, and speaks and holds us accountable for us. So I would encourage it. In fact, I would encourage more people that are on, uh, social media that hide behind, um, anonymous comments on, on webpages or fake accounts on social media pages, to come to these city council proceedings and make your voice known publicly. All of us here on council have email addresses that are publicly known, we all, all have phone numbers that are publicly listed. We also, all of us, I think, up here are ready to devote the time to have conversations with you if you need to stress your concerns. So please, I encourage you to, you know, I'll speak for myself, beat me up. Come to this lectern and hold me accountable, uh, because it just makes us a better city and better people for it. With that said, I don't have anything else, um, other than, before the next city council meeting, I look forward to honoring, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and the parade on the sixteenth and hope to see everybody there. But other than that, all yield.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I, I have the same sentiments and same concern in reference to the death of Austin. And it, it was really a gut feel to hear his, his girlfriend, you know, say to come and, and voice her sentiments and how she felt. And and we do need to come to some resolve. And, and I did ask the city attorney at our last council meeting if he agreed with the decision that the fire chief made in reference to, uh, asking the committee to stand down. And I'm not sure I got an answer. But we need to do whatever is necessary in order to bring this to, to a closure. And so that everybody is satisfied with, with our response and that they feel that we are being responsive and that we are listening to their concerns and we do really care about all of our employees. And, uh, so we, we, we need to, to address that. And then, uh, I think at the last committee meeting, uh, council meeting, I asked about an update on the, uh, Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, and I'm sure we'll get that at some point. And also, uh, we, we did set a date for the, uh, next annexation meeting, uh, so.
Can you remind me of the date? What was the date, I'm sorry?
I'm under my, my report.
Oh, okay.
Um, and the departments did their homework with the data as far as what it would cost, uh, to follow that to take place. And so I'm hoping that at this next meeting, that we're not so focusing on the cost, but focus on the process as to how are we going to make that happen? That's all I have.
Mr. Nesta?
I got a few things, as I always do. Happy New Year to everyone. Just confirm on yours, you're going to cover diversity, inclusion and annexation? Okay, someone asked. Mine are all over the place. The one, you had said just recently, uh, uh, we have a consultant for construction stuff, what company is that, or who is it?
What's the guy's name, the one out of Gainesville? What's the guy we used to look at the big projects, Scott, huh? Scott, yes.
Is that a company or just a, a contract that we work with, individual?
Kind of an, kind of an individual, I mean, he's got his own company, but.
He has his own company, but he's an individual.
And how does he, I guess, consult us?
Some, a couple of the larger projects, I send him the, the background information and ask for, uh, a, a synopsis. And then we usually talk over the phone about the developments and what they are, how many units there are, uh, access points, things like that.
How often would you say we use him?
I think I've done, used him three times now.
Okay. And, and all the time you've been here?
Yes.
We just, we just hired him.
About a year ago, maybe.
Yeah, just put him under contract.
Ravensdale, I believe, is the company's name.
Okay, perfect, yeah, I just, I didn't know we had one, so that just educates me, thank you, appreciate it.
That's good.
We'll talk about a meeting I had today with, um, our recycling and, um, and talking about Adopt a Road, Keep Apopka Beautiful. I'm going to try to kind of revamp that program, really kind of get it going. I think we need to keep our roads a little bit cleaner, will help with beautification, recycling's a big part of that, too. And there's a big financial component to recycling as well, that I think we need to kind of dive into and figure out what we want as a city, as a council. There's a lot there, so I just want to, you guys be ready, I'll be bringing some recycling ideas and things like that up to you guys. Uh, we have the queer, excuse me, Clearwater Lake, um, meeting tomorrow at three, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, I'm excited for that, and I think that'll be really good for us. In reference to the fire department, I had a meeting with them last week, I believe. Um, and it was really just in reference to, the, the whole point of the meeting was, um, to just talk about trailer safety. What were we, and thank you guys for kind of joining us, this perfect timing. So I really just needed to know, I had residents reach out, what are we doing for trailer safety? What, what is, what does that training look like? Who's doing it? And, and, because my whole concern was that, are we just showing somebody how to hook up a trailer? Because.
FWC, remember?
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, so that's, yeah, that, that's what I learned, is, is I wasn't sure on that, and I didn't understand why they were doing it. And so suppose it's going to be a, a more in-depth and really specific to each trailer, so I, that gave me a little more, um, confidence in that program. In that same meeting, we talked about some station four improvements that I'm really looking forward to, I think it's going to really benefit the department as a whole, and obviously the station four, it'll just be incredible improvement. They also, we, we discussed, um, they, they brought it to me of, of having like a monthly meeting basically with the, um, our two new departments, and I was getting confused, it's the safety and then training officers basically meet us monthly, so that we understand what they're working on, just so that we can, um, again, be able to articulate it correctly. So I'm, I'm excited for that, I'm hoping that that will help to not get our, any information off social media or hear third party that we're going to be able to ask questions directly. And so I would hope you guys would kind of take those meetings as well, and, and I think it'll help us, our dialogue, and then help be, us be better leaders, I think.
Do you want to do it individually, or you want to just do it as a council in front of?
E- either one, I, it's, I, I, I thought it was a great idea for the, the fire department brought it to me, so I, I thought it was a great idea. And it's whatever everyone's comfortable with, I don't want it to be. What I told them, and it's to, to Commissioner Velasquez's point, is I'm, I'm tired of coming up here and it be a war. And, and I'm hoping meetings offline will help this be a more cohesive council, commission, a, and a more cohesive department as well. And I hope that trickles down and creates a healthier, more, um, uh, communicative, um, department. We got to start somewhere, and I'm hoping that gets us somewhere. So I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful of that, and I want to give the department the opportunity to create a lot more communication, because again, I've always said, communication breeds confidence, so.
If, if there's a preference, our person prefers they would come to council meetings, so that we're all hearing the same thing.
Okay.
And leaving with the same information.
Yeah, make it consistent, I'm, I'm definitely okay with that, that, I'm good with all of that. And again, it's going to create a lot of, allow us to have a lot of dialogue. So again, it kind of goes to the workshop thing, but I know everyone doesn't like workshops, that's almost like a little mini workshop, so I'm okay with that, absolutely. I just wanted, however we can communicate more is what I want to do, whether it's a little bit or a lot more, I want more.
Once a month, okay?
Yeah.
First, first council meeting of the.
Either one, yeah, however we do it, I think would be, just be great, just have it on, that's our expectation every, every month. Having, I, I think that's just going to be beneficial and, and have a public comment period to ask whatever it may be, whatever certain questions, I think it's going to be very beneficial for that. The other thing, and I, I don't know if, in what capacity this may be beneficial, but to have a fire, to, to add a non-commissioner, non-employee, just a resident, be on that fire safety committee, just to give, just to see that outside perspective. I think that will, they have a, a different view of it, and it just helps with accountability, things like that as well. I think having somebody that doesn't have a job here, they don't have any skin in the game other than wanting this to be as safe as possible. So I, I would think that that would be beneficial to have a resident, a, a non-employee, possibly part of the safety committee, um, be added. So I, it depends what everyone else feels, but I think that would be helpful. Infrastructure, want to just talk about that, it's been just huge what we've been talking about, it's, I know we want, we want safe roads, that should be our, our biggest thing, it's safety for all. And we just need to, it's a multifaceted issue that requires a multifaceted approach. So we're, we're in it, and I think having, um, and this goes to another thing that came up, is just kind of that Kelly Park Interchange Workshop, I think is a really great idea. I think that's going to definitely be beneficial to have a lot of dialogue, have all the, um, uh, key players, uh, Orange County, OCPS, us, the developers, everybody in one room, being able to ha- have questions asked to them, I think is going to be very beneficial moving forward, so that we're all on the same page.
Well, I think we're going to have OCPS come, they're, they're all come separate, they're going to come and do a workshop for us, just about.
That's great, too.
School capacity.
I love workshops, as, as much as possible, I'm happy for that, so, um, that's no problem there, I've already talked about that. Uh, again, the sixteenth for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Parade, I'm looking forward to that and being a part of that. So, oh, and then the other one was just the cyclist and pedestrian safety, we obviously need that. Again, I don't know if you guys saw it driving in, there was a, a bicycle under a car on, on the way here, written as to Caitlin Nelson. Then we had somebody, um, that got struck and passed away last week, two weeks ago, right out front of city hall. So there's clearly a, a need, um, so however we can kind of support that and make sure that we're, we're teaming up our additional sidewalks and all that with, um, best foot forward, I think it can only benefit us, so that's it.
All right.
And let me just give a plug to our fire department. One day last week, there was an accident at the intersection of Keen Road and Apopka, Clercon, where an individual ran through the traffic light, and there was two individuals that were pinned, uh, in an automobile. And I actually had an opportunity to see. And I actually had an opportunity to see the fire department use the jaws of life to release those two individuals from that vehicle. And to watch their professionalism, how they went about and displayed their professionalism in that accident was very, very rewarding. And so just want to give a hands up to, and the police department was on board as well. And blocked off traffic and diverted traffic in other directions until the accident scene was cleared. So just a prime example of our department.
Next up, Edward?
I don't have anything else, Mayor.
Okay, Michael?
Nothing additional to report.
Okay, all right, the mayor's report, six items. One, Clear Lake meeting, public meeting will be tomorrow at 3 o'clock here in the city council chambers. At 5 o'clock, so just right across the street at the Apopka Museum, we're having the Apopka Youth Council meet with the Apopka Museum about Black History Month. So if you want to get involved with that.
That's at 5?
Yeah, it'll be at 5. Next thing, the South Apopka Annexation Community Meeting will be Tuesday, January 24th, 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the John Bridges Center.
What is time again?
4:00 to 6:00.
So there was an idea brought up, and not to, just kind of piggyback that real quick, if we can hand out or create quick flyers for possibly handing out at the parade on the 16th, just to educate and let everyone know that this is going to be an event there, because it ends at the John Bridges Center, I think that would just be beneficial to get a more robust crowd there. I don't know if we can create something like that quickly.
Okay, do you just want time dating, or do you want kind of more than that? You want a more robust, or just?
No, yes, it's an annexation workshop.
Okay.
Place, location, quick, concise.
Okay, all right.
Easy to hand out and discuss.
We can handle that.
Awesome.
Okay, next up, Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. We're going to, we're partnering with our friends over at the Apopka Chamber for a joint DEI committee, committees. It's going to be January 31st, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. at the VFW to look at, we're going to go back and look at some of the things that are bid processes, they're going to help us with some of the diversity minority contracting business. So it should be, still formulating the agenda, but it will be January 31st, Tuesday, at 1:00 p.m. at the VFW. So we're also bringing our partners that are doing a lot of the development to, you know, to have them be a part of that as well. Next up, federal appropriations, HR 2617. The Consolidated Appropriations Act was signed into law on 12/29/2022. Congresswoman Demings got us the $2.5 million. And President Biden signed it into law, so we got $2.5 million to replace galvanized asbestos pipes. And the last thing I'm pretty proud of, I had a small part in it, is the new building, the OCPS Technical Training Center across from Wheatley has been named, will be named, the Shirley Sharp Terrell Building. So I'm excited about that. I think, I haven't got, I don't know if the date has been set for the ribbon cutting, but excited, you know, what a wonderful lady, great tribute to her and what she's accomplished here in Apopka. So anyway, and with that.
And once you get that date, will you let us know?
I will let you know, absolutely. With that.